Good afternoon. Glad to see everyone here today. This thirteenth day of February 2024, it is 1:30, and I am calling City Council into session at this time. 1:30, we have posted on the agenda, we will now move to executive session. And once we come back from executive session, we will promptly bring up our regular agenda. Today, we will start with the regular agenda and then follow that with the consent agenda. So at this time, City Council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the following. Pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code and the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property under Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code. So at this time, City Council is in executive session. We are adjourned. Recession. All right, good afternoon. We are back from executive session. At this time, City Council is reconvening an open session, and we will first begin with our ceremonial items. And this afternoon, I'm really pleased to have Pastor Alan Elo with the Gloria Day Lutheran Church to give us our opening invocation. So if you'd all please stand or remove hats if you have them on. And then, once the prayer is done, if you would remain standing as we will have our pledges led by Mayor Pro Tem Patterson Harris.
May we pray. Gracious Lord God, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We seek your presence among this council and citizens as they meet, engage in discussion, and work toward mutuality for the good of your people. Preserve our nation in justice and honor that we may lead a peaceable life of integrity. Grant health and favor to all who bear office in our land. We thank you for this city and its inhabitants. We pray for our mayor, the council, city managers, and all public servants. And especially, we thank you for first responders, for hospitals and healthcare workers. Help them to serve this people according to your will. We lift up to you, Lord, the many in our world who are in need and those in our community who are in need. For the marginalized in our society, for those who are without homes and families, for those who are lost and lonely, for those who are without food and comfort. Keep those less fortunate than we close in our hearts. That we may be ambassadors of faith, hope, and love. And help us to treasure the blessings we have, that we would not take those things for granted. We praise you for the recent rain and for the snow, life-giving water from your bounty. Let your blessing rest upon the seed time and harvest, the commerce and industry, the leisure and rest, the arts and culture of your people. Take under your special protection those whose work is difficult or dangerous, and be with all who lay their hands to any useful task. We pray your blessing upon our schools, colleges, universities, and centers of research, upon students and those who teach in them. Bestow your wisdom in such measure that people may serve you and our common life may be conformed to rule of truth and justice. Among our young people, raise up new generations of faithful leaders with servant hearts. Take from us all hatred and prejudice. Give us a spirit of love and dispose our days in your peace. Remind us that there are more things that unite us than divide us. And with love, we can accomplish much. All these things and whatever else you see that we need, grant us. And may the Lord now bless us and keep us. The Lord's face shine upon us and be gracious to us. The Lord look upon us with favor and give us peace. Amen.
Thank you so much. If you will please remain standing and join us as we offer the pledge of the United States and Texas flag.
Our allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. Our allegiance to the United States, one nation under God, indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you Pastor Elo for being with us today. We truly appreciate your time. All right, before we get started with citizen comments, Ms. Julie, I think you have someone here from a student or class that you'd like to introduce?
Two. Mackenzie, where are you? Come on up to the front. Two. Mackenzie Mills, a young woman from Lubbock. She attended Lubbock Christian University Covenant School of Nursing and then got her BSN from Covenant. Went to work right before COVID, and I think never missed a beat after that. Worked continuously. But she's now working on her nurse practitioner's certification license and is in a class. And one of their requirements is that they attend group meetings where community issues are being discussed, and also she'll be interviewing people as well. So she's here today. She picked a really good day to be here, because you're going to hear a lot, but wanted you to recognize her and do you have an opportunity to say hello to her. We know our healthcare workers are so, so very important. She went to work in pediatrics and then in pediatric emergency. Is that what you're still doing? Still doing, working seven to seven and extra shifts and working on her nurse practitioner. So welcome.
All right, we also have my high school math teacher here, Ms. Gunn. I'm not going to ask her to stand up and say any words. Don't ask her any questions. All right. So we will have citizen comments at this time. Citizen comments, any person wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting of the City Council regarding any matter posted on the agenda will be able to sign and complete a form no later than 2:00 PM, and then they will have the opportunity to speak, make comments, express a position on an agenda item only. You have three minutes. You will get a nice warning bell from Jimmy at two and a half minutes and then a final double ring of the bell at three minutes. So two and a half minute warning and then the three minutes, we are going to ask you to keep on time today because we have a lot to get through. So at this time, and also I apologize if I mispronounce or misspell your name. Just please give your name, if you would, out of courtesy, give your address as you step forward and then on the agenda item that you are speaking. We first have Mary Doones. Is that right, Mary?
Duaneis.
Ah, Duaneis. Oh, well. I wasn't even close, Mary.
That's okay. It's close enough. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for allowing us to be here. I'm going to be speaking on, commenting on item 5.28. My name is Mary Duaneis, and I am a survivor advocate for the Voice of Hope. I'm a human trafficking advocate, and we are the Lubbock Great Crisis Center. In working with other organizations throughout the state of Texas, we take a lot of pride in knowing that Lubbock is leading the way and is on the forefront line of providing the best services for victims of human trafficking. Along with organizations such as Open Door Survivor Housing, Salvation Army, and many others, we provide direct services to clients of this vulnerable population. Roughly 80% of the clients that we serve are in need of housing. Unfortunately, Voice of Hope does not provide housing, and we rely heavily on organizations that are able to provide this service. A vote of the stakeholders has not been held yet, and we would be against Lubbock having an independent COC. Because of this, we kindly and respectfully ask the City Council to consider having a more informative community conversation so that all parties are well-informed and aware about this very important issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Next up, Mary Gutterslaw.
I have a question. I've worked with Southlake's Homeless Consortium since it began nearly, and I've been in and out. I've served on the committee, all of the offices. So I'm really very familiar with the Texas THN Balance of State Continuum of Care. Lots of, lots of good, good people have been really hardworking to get that going. And I'm going to leave others to tell you more about it, but I have one question. I don't understand, where did, how did it come about to select EC HO as the lead agency? When we have lots of, lots of information for you about what has worked and what has, does not work. So that's my question for you, and I'll leave it to whomever wants to answer that. What was the process that you went through to select the lead agency?
Ms. Gutterslaw, this is time for you to make comments. This is not discussion time or question and answer time.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. So if you, any questions, you can pose or you can make your comments, but that's what this time is, your comment time.
Yes, I, we meet once a month regularly. We've covered a lot of issues. We have developed a program, Project Hand Up, that's, we did not, do not charge for those things. We have a membership fee for $100 a year, and we've put that money aside for a project hand up, and that's specifically for things that fall through the crack. You know, if you've got a job and you don't have the money and your car broke down, where are you going to go to get it? And they can apply, and member agency can apply for that, that monies to get that fixed. So with, over the years, we've learned what works and what doesn't work. So that's all I need to know, but I would like to know how it's selected. We would have loved to have had you at our meetings to see what we do have available and what we do, how we work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gutterslaw. Chase Smith?
My name is Chase Smith. I live at 5327 20th Street, right off Slide here in Lubbock, Texas, 79407. And I'm here to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 528, the resolution to form a local continuum of care. I'm the community center director and a minister at Lubbock Open Door. First, I want to acknowledge that Open Door has served our neighbors experiencing poverty, homelessness, and sex trafficking in the Lubbock community for 27 years. And as a Christian organization, we are and will always be committed to caring for those Jesus refers to as the least of these. And it is on behalf of these, our neighbors, that we are here today. I acknowledge that the issues before you are many, and many of them are complex. And while they are complicated, I believe you also take seriously the importance of their impact on the lives of our neighbors. Today, you will hear various arguments regarding this resolution, but I want you to keep in mind that we're not just talking about policy or funding, organizations, but about people. People like Donald. Donald has been homeless for nearly three, had been homeless for almost three decades before entering our Open Door Supportive Housing Program. And when I met Donald, he was living on the streets here in Lubbock, confined to his wheelchair and struggling with schizophrenia. In 2017, Open Door applied for funding through the Texas Balance of State Continuum of Care and was awarded its first project to provide permanent supportive housing for people experiencing chronic homelessness, people like Donald. In that year, we moved Donald into his own apartment and surrounded him with supportive services that helped him access care he had not received in a long time. Unfortunately, his condition was so poor when he entered housing that he was soon placed in hospice care. And after about a year in housing while celebrating his birthday inside his unit, Donald passed away in his home surrounded by people who loved him. And I was there, I will remember that moment forever. And while tragic in a way, it was also beautiful. He died in his own home, safe and warm, with people who loved him, holding his hand as he took his last breath. If only we could all be so lucky. In the case of the resolution to form a local continuum of care, the potential impact on our most vulnerable neighbors is significant. Tonight, more than 80 people like Donald depend on the funding received through the Texas Balance of State Continuum of Care and Open Door Supportive Housing. This issue isn't just about funding or control, it's about people's lives, where they live, and the care they receive in their most vulnerable moments. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Rin Day?
My name is Rin Day, and I live at 2423 28th Street in Lubbock, 79411. I am here to speak in opposition to the Agenda Item 5.28, the resolution to form a local continuum of care. I am the Chair of the Board of Directors for Lubbock Open Door. The FAQ on the Lubbock COC provided to you by city staff includes the question, "Do we have access to more money staying under the Texas Balance of State COC?" This is question 11. I want you to notice that the FAQ response to the question does not say yes or no. The response ends with the line, "A variety of variables to consider." I want to respond to this question and speak to those variables. First, here are just a few numbers from the 2023 HUD COC awards publicized three weeks ago. Lubbock Open Door was awarded 2.6 million through the Texas Balance State COC. Amarillo COC, the smallest COC in Texas, was awarded 442,000. A Lubbock COC would be the second smallest in Texas, next to Amarillo. Wichita Falls, Wise, Palo Pinto, Wichita, Archer County COC, with a larger population than Lubbock COC, was awarded 357,000. Bryan College Station, Brazos Valley COC, also a larger COC, was awarded 454,000. You've been told that Waco-McLennan County COC is the closest existing COC to a Lubbock COC. This year, they were awarded 2.6 million. What you may not have been told, however, is that more than 1.2 million of their total award comes from YHDP, which is the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Project. YHDP is a separate funding source awarded to only a few communities across the United States. Waco-McLennan COC received YHDP funding in 2018, which was rolled into their COC funding in 2021. Without it, their comparable COC funding is just over 1.3 million, more than 1.2 million less than what Open Door brings to Lubbock. Even when considering Waco-McLennan COC the outlier of the four smallest COCs in Texas, Open Door brings in more funding to Lubbock through the Texas Balance of State Continuum of Care than all of them. Do we have access to more money in the Texas Balance of State COC today? The answer is yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Day. Chad Wheeler?
My name is Chad Wheeler. I live at 2211 21st Street, Lubbock, Texas, 79411. And I'm here to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 5.28, the resolution to form a local continuum of care. I'm also the CEO at Lubbock Open Door. I think it's helpful to consider this resolution within its larger context. The proposal to leave the Texas Balance of State Continuum of Care and form a Lubbock COC was first initiated by the City of Lubbock and Lubbock County on April 6, 2022, when Mayor Dan Pope and County Judge Curtis Parish jointly sent a letter to HUD and the Texas Balance of State COC requesting that the City of Lubbock and Lubbock County be removed from the Balance of State. Thankfully, HUD does not allow communities to leave the COC before they have a new COC established. Otherwise, COC funding and operations in that county would collapse. Then, at the May 10, 2022 City Council meeting, the issue was publicly brought before the City Council for the first time. At that meeting, Karen Murphy and Bill Howerton presented their reasoning for a Lubbock COC, and the Council unanimously voted in support of a resolution almost identical to the one before you today. In his presentation, Bill Howerton told the Council, quote, "We did leave the Balance of State to do this on our own. So Balance of State is releasing City of Lubbock and the County of Lubbock, and in about two to six months, we'll have, we'll be our own continuum of care." This does open us up to some avenues for additional funding through HUD, end quote. Mr. Howerton went on to tell the Council, quote, "I mentioned the $700,000 to $800,000 that we're, we're leaving on the table. We have about $2 million for the group. The one agency that they're referring to is receiving about 1.3 million of that. So every year that we don't do something like this, we're leaving about $800,000 not being used that really would help our community greatly," end quote. The problem is, what he told the Council that day was not accurate. The City of Lubbock was, at the time, still part of the Balance of State and still is today. And the organization he was referring to, Lubbock Open Door, was not receiving 1.3 million, but 2.5 million. Rather than leaving $700,000 to $800,000 on the table, as he said, we were bringing in half a million dollars more to Lubbock than the amount available to a Lubbock COC. This is important because it highlights the lack of clear and accurate communication that has complicated this issue from the start. I am requesting that this item be tabled, and the Council initiate a clear and accurate communication process involving a broad representation of stakeholders on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Amanda Acevedo?
My name is Amanda Acevedo, and I live at 5602 48th Street, Lubbock, Texas, 79414. I am also here to speak in opposition to Agenda 5.28, the resolution to form a local continuum of care. I'm the Lead Case Manager in Supportive Housing at Lubbock Open Door. I want to respond to the question, "Do we have access to more money staying under the Texas Balance of State COC from a different angle by looking at the potential for new funding?" In a typical year, HUD makes new funding available to COCs through bonus funding. COCs are not guaranteed to receive this funding, they still have to apply through competitive process to receive them. But bonus funding amounts give COCs the idea of the potential they may have to add to new projects in a given year. In the 2023 competition, here's what bonus funding looked like for the four smallest COCs in Texas. Amarillo COC received 115, or had 115,000 available in bonus funding and 165,000 in DV domestic violence funding. Wichita Falls, Wise, Palo Pinto, Wichita, Archer County COC had 109,000 available in bonus funding and 155,000 in DV bonus. Bryan College Station, Brazos Valley COC had 89,000 available in bonus funding and 127,000 in DV bonus. Waco-McLennan County COC had 159,000 available in bonus funding and 224,000 available in DV bonus funding. By comparison, the Texas Balance of State COC had a whopping 3.8 million in bonus funding, eight times much, as much more funding that was available in the four smallest COCs combined, and 5 million available in DV bonus funding. This may be the biggest concern about the proposed move to a Lubbock COC, that it removes us from a system with enormous potential for growth to a system in which it would take years to see any kind of meaningful increase in funding. Do we have access to more money staying under the Texas Balance of State COC? Yes, now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Acevedo.
That's okay. Good afternoon, Council. My name is Andrea Omohola. I live at 5430 16th Street, Lubbock, Texas, 79416. I'm here to speak in opposition as well to the Agenda Item 5.28, the resolution to form the local continuum of care. I am the Chief Operating Officer at Lubbock Open Door. The FAQ provided to the Council by the city staff contains several mentions of a local-led COC. Question six, bullet point two, says that the local-led COC tailors solutions to match the needs to the community rather than having a state agency or government agency apply blanket policies that may not appropriately deal with the issues in a local area and could create more problems in that community. The problem is that the government does not currently set the policies or strategies for the Texas Balance of State. This is another argument that was presented early on in Lubbock's consideration of this change, and the idea that people far away in Austin are making decisions for Lubbock through the Texas Balance of State COC is simply false and incorrect. I have personally served alongside several other Lubbock citizens, helping to set direction for the Texas Balance of State, advocating for Lubbock and its identified priorities. If you read this FAQ, you may ask yourself why any community at all would want to be a part of the Texas Balance of State COC. And the way it is written, you might think that a local-led COC is all good, but then a Texas Balance of State COC is all bad. However, since the formation of the COC program, there has not been one single community in Texas that has left the Texas Balance of State to form a new COC. Not one. In fact, the trend goes in the opposite direction. Abilene, Galveston, and Corpus Christi, for example, each used to be in, used to be their own COCs, but they have dissolved and they have joined the Texas Balance of State. And you may ask, why? Why are midside cities like Denton, Abilene, Corpus Christi, and others a part of the Texas Balance of State? Because they have the benefits of access to a large pool of funding and significant competitiveness, capacity, and expertise in the Balance of State. Rather than leaving the Balance of State, these communities are engaging in this high-capacity system to improve their communities. Within the Texas Balance of State, Abilene reached functional zero for chronic homelessness in 2020. Within the Balance of State, Denton uses the same database that we currently use to produce and use high-quality, and produce high-quality homeless data. We can and should improve our local system. We do not need to leave the Balance of State to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Chad Jackson?
My name is Chad Jackson. I live at 6315 77th Street, Lubbock, Texas, 79424. I'm here to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 5.28, the resolution to form a local continuum of care. I'm a board member at Lubbock Open Door. Reading the FAQ, it is clear that a local-led COC has been presented as the solution to all of our problems. It describes a well-run, local-led COC saying that it puts the solutions to end homelessness in the hands of the local community, may help us end homelessness in our area, increases data sharing, coordination, and results in better outcomes and more funding opportunities. This all sounds great, but becoming our own COC is not a magic bullet. If becoming our own COC resulted in more funding, better collaboration, and ends to homelessness, then why do we see communities like Amarillo with less funding, higher rates of homelessness, and by echo West Texas' own admission, poor collaboration? Instead of a picturesque future, William Snow, Senior Specialist with HUD's Office of Special Needs Assistance Programs, or SNAPs, painted the following picture of a new COC at a presentation in Lubbock on June 9, 2022. He said, quote, "When a split occurs, money does not typically follow, so I need to be very honest about that. It's hard to get money for anyone in a new jurisdiction. If a split occurs with the hope that there will be more money, that is not likely to happen soon. It is hard to be competitive as a new COC. So I'll just kind of be realistic about that part. I'd say the first two or three years, it's almost impossible to just be competitive at the national level. So when you ask the question, is it beneficial from a money standpoint, typically it's not," end quote. Over the last 10 years, the Amarillo COC's total funding has not increased but decreased by 42.75% from receiving 772,000 in 2014 to receiving $442,000 in this year's award. By contrast, the Texas Balance of State's total funding increased by 146% from nearly $7 million in 2014 to $16.9 million this year. In that same time, homelessness in Amarillo has increased by 51% from 451 people counted in their 2014 point-in-time count to 683 people counted in 2023. Clearly, being a local-led COC does not guarantee our success. In fact, there are strong arguments that it threatens to reduce our funding and increase the number of people in homelessness in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Jamie Wheeler?
Good afternoon, Council.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Jamie Wheeler. I live downtown at 2211 21st Street in Lubbock, 79411. I'm also here to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 5.28, the resolution to form a local continuum of care. I'm the survivor housing director at Lubbock Open Door, and I've had the great privilege of working alongside people experiencing poverty, homelessness, and sex trafficking in Lubbock for the last 17 years. I'm also a licensed master social worker. I've served as a sex trafficking advocate for Voice of Hope and also as the director of Survivor Housing since 2018. In 2021, Open Door applied for domestic violence bonus funding to create a new project, Open Door Survivor Housing. It's a joint transitional housing rapid rehousing project, providing safe housing and supportive services to survivors of sex trafficking and their children. And tonight, 24 survivor households, which include 25 children, have a safe place to call home because of the funding we receive through the Texas Balance of State Continuum of Care. In my years of experience, I've learned the importance of listening to those who experienced the crisis of homelessness and the trauma of trafficking firsthand. I invite them to the table, and we should invite them to the table, to be a part of the decisions that impact them more than anybody else. At Survivor Housing, more than half of our employees are survivors of sex trafficking themselves. I lean on them and their lived experience daily to know how best to support the survivors that we serve. We also regularly invite the survivors we serve to have a voice in our programming, to help shape the way that we operate. While we don't have survivor participants speaking today due to confidentiality and safety, I want you to know that more than 100 survivors in our program have found healing and new life for themselves and for their children. I encourage you today to invite the voices of those with lived experiences in homelessness and trafficking, as well as those on the front lines of serving them, to the table as invaluable participants in shaping the future of our community. If you are here today because you share these concerns, please stand.
Ms. Wheeler, were you done with your time? Quinn Paschal?
Good afternoon, council. My name is Walter Quinn Paschal. I live at 2202 15th Street, Lubbock, Texas, 7941. I'm here to speak in opposition of Agenda Item 5.28, the resolution to form a local condominium, a continuum of care. I'm a member of the Board of Open Door. I'm also a resident of Open Door Supportive Housing. I was homeless for 22 years. There was a time when I thought I might not ever get off the streets, but in 2016, Open Door helped me move into my apartment. The funding that applied for me and received through the Texas Board of Balance Continuum of Care made it possible for me to move into my apartment. I was also helped to support me to stay in the housing that takes care of myself. I turned 70 this year. I'm too old to go back on the streets. Please think carefully about the decisions you make that affect people like me. Thank you, and people that work at Open Door are my family.
Thank you, Quinn. Happy birthday. I apologize, I don't have my readers. Erica Perry?
Hello, my name is Erica Perry. I am the Director of Social Services for the Salvation Army here in Lubbock. I am here to speak in opposition of item number 5.28. I know y'all have heard a lot of good information. I'm not going to duplicate that, but I am going to ask for more consideration on this topic, perhaps more consideration with all of the homeless providers in the community. And that's all I've got. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Erica. Dr. Susie Liner?
Good afternoon. I'm Susie Beck Liner. I live at 4811 104th Street in Lubbock, 79424. I'm here to advocate for 5.28 for the formation of a new continuum of care here in Lubbock. I'd like to begin by saying thank you for all of the entities that are represented here today, including this body of leaders that are addressing homelessness in Lubbock. But I would like to clearly state that more efforts are needed on behalf of the homeless and the working poor. We have voids in our system, so what I'm asking you for today is change. What Echo offers is the following. One, it offers collaborative care. What is not happening in our system today is collaboration. We're not talking to one another. We have excellent resources in Lubbock, Texas for our population, but unfortunately, we don't have avenues for our people to access that care. Also, when you look at some of our population, they don't have the right financial status to fit the programs that we offer. Some of our citizens work, but they work just enough to fall in the margin where they're not getting appropriate care and they don't qualify for certain programs. So I would like to advocate today for that population because I believe that is what Echo is offering us today, is that collaboration for the population that doesn't have care. What I see Echo doing that is different is that they would be bridging the gap. They would bridge the gap between medical services and social services. They would network with hospitals, with providers, with the City of Lubbock Health Department to fill that void. For example, where does a patient go when they get out of the hospital or if they're in the population of the working poor? They don't have a PCP. They don't have medical insurance. Lubbock Impact has a clinic that was established in 2009 with seasoned medical providers working as the medical directors there. They can go there and receive free medical care and never get a bill. And they're automatically in the system, so now they have a full-time medical provider at Lubbock Impact. Also, the system that Echo offers addresses more than housing. It takes more than housing to stabilize and help develop sustainability for these families. Clothing, food, economic services, education, these are all components that Echo will pull into our system, and they will be the communicator and the collaborator to take what we have, not take away from what we have, but add to and make change in our existing system. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, doctor. Erica Bright?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Erica Bright. My address is 1703 Avenue H, but I am Wright, that is an Abernathy, but I'm Wright on the city line, county line. So I hope that I'm allowed to still speak today. If it helps, I lived in Lubbock until I was 21 years old. So I am here to speak in support of the Agenda Item 5.28. I am the Director of Reclaim 43, a mentor program for teenagers aging out of foster care here in Lubbock County. I lived and grew up in Lubbock. Like I said, my parents were lower socioeconomic parents. There was a lot of parental drug abuse. My siblings and I were bounced around in foster care from house to house. My mom ended up dying when I was three years old as a young adult, and I went on to live a childhood of abuse until I reported that abuse to a community and was entered into the Lubbock foster care system at 12 years old. I stayed in foster care here in Lubbock and bounced around from placement to placement until I was amazingly adopted out at 16. That gave me the perspective of foster care teenagers here in Lubbock and what life looks like after you age out of foster care at 18. There is a huge population of our young adults who are living homeless here in Lubbock and have been continuously ever since 2009, when, as you know, the government switched aside a lot of the CPS protocols and the way that the system is ran for those teenagers. I am here in support of 5.28 because a lot of the programming that would be put in place with the COC includes most of the issues that my young adults deal with today. I have several young adults who have unknown medical issues that they would bounce around from doctor to doctor because they don't have any consistent documentation on their issues. I have lots of housing placement issues where we don't know where they were living, how long they were living there, and then how to support them in a better way. And a lot of the answers to that are going to be what the doctor just talked about, which is a lot of collaboration across these nonprofits. Through my own experience in getting adopted out of the system, I was able to go on to graduate from Texas Tech University. I have a degree in speech therapy. That's my full-time job. And then I went on to start my own family and be involved in the community here in Lubbock that I love. And I'm living proof that community makes all the difference. I was able to walk out of a lifetime of abuse and poverty, which is the most, poverty is going to be what impacts our homeless community the most. One of the programs I love that's going to be a part of the COC has a saying that we are walking people out of not just economic poverty, which just gives them a handout, but also spiritual and relational poverty. And I fully believe community is the answer to that. So I just hope that you guys would take that into consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Erica. I could probably say, no matter what side of any issue you're on here today in this audience, I guarantee you everyone in here is very proud of you for what you've done. Well done. Catherine Aguera? Or it says, or Allen? Okay. We'll move to Mark Daniel.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mark Daniel. My address is 3430 60th Street, and I am the Director of Love the Hub. Our organization receives requests from people needing rental, utility, and grocery assistance on a weekly basis. Just today, we received over 40 requests this morning. We talk to people all the time who are one missed paycheck away from homelessness. We, you know, we have noticed in our time, there are so many excellent organizations in town that we're able to recommend people to all the time for specific needs that we're not able to meet. I came to Love the Hub recently from the education world. I worked for Lubbock ISD for the last four years, and I've taught in Title I schools for over 10. I know from experience that to make a difference, collaboration is key. Similarly, to be able to combat poverty and homelessness effectively in Lubbock, we must work together. The team at Echo West Texas have demonstrated their desire to bring people together to work for a common goal and to make the biggest difference that is possible in the city that we love, which is Lubbock. Love the Hub fully supports their efforts in the creation of a locally-based COC. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Valerie Longoria?
Good afternoon. I'm Valerie Longoria, Executive Director for Echo West Texas. My address is 5501 111 79424. When I came to Lubbock, I've been here for about two and a half years. I used to serve as the Executive Director for Family Promise, and I realized very quickly that we weren't paying attention to prevention. Prevention because we found that a lot of families who we were serving today who are homeless could have been prevented beforehand, but were not working together. I found a team of other providers who wanted to work together, but we were divided. There was this one body who is responsible to bring collaboration and to do that. And in our goal and our effort to just work with one another, to find solutions, to pay attention to prevention, and also to sustainability, where we were finding the problems of not being able to overcome all the hardship with the economic rise of costs of living, how can you do it? And so what we came together was figure out how do we build something? How do we connect? How do we create collaborative funding solutions? We needed data. We needed to connect one another. When we started on the journey of coming together and building Echo West Texas, that's what we did. We went to other areas. We found out from other COCs, not just the ones that are thriving, but the ones that are challenged too. We went to all of them, even outside of Texas. And what we did was finding what was the core thing that they all had in common. It was collaboration. If they had collaboration, they were thriving. If they did not have collaboration, they were hurting. And in that, and I know our goal is not to hurt anyone, to hurt funding or any type of pool of resources. We have already talked about that in some of our board meetings. That would not be a smart move for us. But what we want is collaboration. We want a coordinated care plan where we're working together with one another. Have we had opportunities of collaboration? August 21 is when we had a discussion to start these things, to ask questions, and three of the organizations, Open Door, Vetstar, and the South Plains Homeless Consortium, they opted out to not further those discussions when other organizations had questions that we were getting answered through THN, through HUD. THN was on the call as well. So we have made a lot of efforts. I have continuously had documentation of where I reached out, and I'm still attempting. We have a lot of other great events partnered with Texas Tech, partnered with the Health Department, partnered with Community Neighborhood Impact that comes into the areas and they help to develop a collective impact model. We have those things going on, and every single one of these providers have been included, every single time, regardless of whether we are included in their groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Longoria. Becky Robertson?
My name is Becky Robertson. I'm the Executive Director at Lubbock Impact. My address is 58 West Lake Shore, Ransome Canyon, 79366. I am here to say that I am for 528, the continuum of care with Echo. And when I look at where I come from, a very different perspective. Lubbock Impact serves people in the area of food, clothing, healthcare, spiritual care. And what that looks like is we serve all people. We're serving the at-risk population. We're serving the homeless population. We're, a lot of times, boots on the ground of getting people resources. For me, it's a little bit about the housing piece of it. We're a resource place. We're sending people to all different types of resources. And for us, it's hard to find short-care housing. It's sheltering. We're looking for housing for families, and there's a huge shortage of that. There's specific housing for certain people, but there's a lot of people who miss that gap. And so that is where my concern is, is bringing all of those together to collaborate so we can be on the same page. The other part of it is, is there's a whole nother side that's talking about the medical piece of it, and that's also where there's the continuum of care. It's working with the hospitals, making sure that it's not just about housing. There's a lot of other pieces that go into that, making sure people that have food, they have clothing, and those are areas that we're consistently having, we're coming alongside people and filling the gap. When we talk to people, we say it's about the working poor. That's kind of where our space falls. But we are serving all people, and there are a lot of people coming to the door that we're serving that are falling in those areas. And so when I look at that and learning more about Echo, learning, doing my research, finding all the things out of where do I fall in that, we don't take any federal funding. We're not a part of HUD. We don't do any of that. But we are serving the people face-to-face every day that are in a place of homelessness or right there. We had this morning, we have a program called Work Life. I had a husband and a wife that had been sleeping in their car. We reached out to the other resources that were available six months ago. There was no housing available to them, and so that put them out on the streets. And so in conversation and helping them, they were able to, we had a couple of churches that came in and stepped in, got them some housing for a short term. They now have a job, came to a work program class, and they're getting on their feet. So there's, it took a collaboration of multiple agencies coming together to make those types of things happen. And so I'm for bringing those pieces together and for us to work as a team together to meet the needs of our citizens. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Becky. Jerry Ramirez? Jerry Ramirez? Jerry, we're going to put you under oath.
That may not be a bad idea. Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for the opportunity to get to address you. My name is Jerry Ramirez. I reside at 4801 First Place here in Lubbock, Texas, 79416. And I would like to speak in support of Resolution 5.28, the formation of local continuum of care. You've heard a lot about collaboration, and that's exactly what we want to do. Yes, there are homeless people, and we've heard a lot about one entity here in Lubbock, but there's many more entities in our community that are making a difference, that are working with those that are marginalized, that are the working poor, that are homeless. Some may not, we may not be able to count because they don't fit the definition of a true homeless person, but they're living in their cars. We have a number of children within our LISD that are homeless. And so I want us to realize that there are more entities that come to the table for funding. And so collaboration is key. In the last year of my involvement with Echo West Texas, I've seen collaborative efforts, easy for me to say, but that, what you're bringing, you've heard from some of those organizations, and we're coming together, we're trying to make a difference with more. And so, yeah, homeless is very real, and we recognize that. That's not something we all need to talk about because it's here. And there are entities that are doing a great job. But we've heard from one that is receiving a lot of the funding. Echo West Texas, it's the goal of Echo West Texas to change that so that through collaboration, through working together, we can do more. Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you, Jerry. Dylan Dalton?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council and community. My name is Dylan Dalton. I reside at 2703 Genoa Avenue Apartment 3, Lubbock, Texas, 79407. I stand in front of you today in support of Resolution 5.28, the creation of a local continuum of care. So I want to start with HUD's definition of what a continuum of care is. A continuum care program is designed to promote a community-wide commitment to the goal of ending homelessness, to provide funding for efforts by nonprofit providers, states, Indian tribes, or tribally-designated housing entities, and local governments to quickly rehouse homeless individuals, families, persons fleeing domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, and stalking, and youth while minimizing the trauma and dislocation caused by homelessness, to promote access to families, and to optimize self-sufficiency among those experiencing homelessness. As you can see, their efforts are to make a community-wide effort, not a single effort, a community-wide effort. That's you, that's me, that's us. It is our job to take care of the people around us, our job to take care of our neighbors. THN states that the balance of state COC is meant to cover areas of the state that do not have the resources to establish their own COC. I believe, and I'm sure a lot of people in this room can agree with me, that Lubbock has the resources to create our own COC. We are not to rely on a greater entity to take care of our people. We are to take care of our people. It has been proven that local COCs all across the United States have seen an increase of funding because they are able to pick up local data. We are able to show the need in our community rather than as a whole state. When you have that data, there's more opportunity for you to show your success as a program and as a community of taking care of the marginalized people. In California, over the last 10 years, from 2011 to 2021, the state of California received an average increase in 79% in funding because of the creation of local COCs. It's time for Lubbock to create their own COC. We have the resources. We have the population. And not only that, we need to collaborate. This is a community-wide effort. This is a win for me. This is a win for you. This is a win for us. But most importantly, it's a win for our community and our marginalized people. We are to stretch our hands out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. David Alderson?
Thank you. Hello, Council. David Alderson, formerly of 9201 Salisbury, Lubbock, Texas, 79424. Was born here in 1964. I am the chairman of the board for Echo West Texas. I began work on this as a member of the Downtown TIF, downtown business owner in Lubbock, Texas, several years ago, through a former council. And I think what we are trying to do, working with councils and with city staff, is we have looked at other cities in the state of Texas and outside of Texas that are getting it right. I used to say early on, you want to be San Antonio, you don't want to be Austin. Well, San Antonio has a great governance model. So what Echo West Texas is looking to do is to bring a better governance model. We're not here to decrease funding. All our conversations with THN, or HUD for that matter, say you shouldn't expect to decrease funding. We actually would hope to build more funding. A good example would be, I talked to Superintendent Rollo the other day. There are 600 students currently in LISD that are not considered in our grant funding at this point. Through collaborative grant writing process, we hope to gather more resources, more data to increase the funding for Lubbock County, and that's what we want to bring. I know that we've all attended San Antonio, previous councils went to Fort Worth, Drew Worth. There's some wonderful cities that are doing it right, and we just want to keep Lubbock up to speed with those forward-looking cities and help provide a governance model that's about collaboration, collaborative grant writing that represents the whole and builds more resources to be shared among more organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Alderson. Ted Hogan?
Good afternoon. My name is Ted Hogan. We reside at 2712 20th here in Lubbock. And I'm not here on behalf of an organization or a group. I don't have a lot of statistics for you. I don't have a lot of metrics. But what I can bring you are the personal observations that I have. And I'm doing so wearing two hats. First of all, as many of y'all know, we own a number of properties in the South Overton area, which is basically ground zero of the homeless situation. What we are seeing in that area over the past years is not an improvement, but an exacerbation of the problems. I find that I'm spending way too much time in alleys. Right now, we have four employees, two of whom are homeless, who are out there cleaning up alleys all throughout South Overton, trying to mitigate the problems that we're seeing from this population. And I'm bringing this not as criticism, but to simply demonstrate that the current system that we have in place is not effectively addressing the problem. Why is that? That brings the second hat that I'm wearing today. I've spent about 30 years practicing law, and the majority of that time has been doing integrative criminal defense work, primarily with special needs populations, schizophrenics, ADD, folks who are on the margins of society. And I, along with another, a small group of attorneys, have found time and time again, as we try to reintegrate our clients back into the community, the resources simply are not there. And the reason is that we don't have the collaboration that this community needs in order to effectively address the solution. This is a multifaceted problem. It does not call for a one-size-fits-all solution. So I'm speaking in support of this resolution because I think we need to broaden the base, and I think it's important that we come together as a community to work collaboratively together in order to move this community forward and better serve the people who live on the margins. If we can do that, we help our community as a whole. We make Lubbock better if we take care of this population by working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. All right, that's all the citizen comments we had signed up. At this time, I'm calling the regular agenda to order. We have minutes 4.1, December 19th of 2023 from EUB, as well as January 9th, 24, regular city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Thank you, Ms. Joy. All in favor of approval of the minutes under 4.1, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, 4.1 carries 7-0. All right, Council, we are going to move to the regular agenda specifically because we do have some deadlines under 6.1. This is authorization, or the resolution authorizing mayor to execute a contract for purchase of electricity for the city of Lubbock facilities. Blue, I'm going to turn it over to you. We also have, you know, some questions. Jennifer Mayberry is here if we have questions specifically to the provider. But I'm going to go ahead and let Blue give us a short presentation since we've got a lot to go through, and then we can take up further questions through discussion.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Council. So yes, I appreciate you pulling this up. We do have a little bit of a deadline because of the way the electric market works and these pricings. So to briefly go over what we've done, exactly what the rest of our city residents and businesses have done, they're selecting their providers. We have also had to do that for our approximately 900 meters that we have out there within our city of Lubbock system. So through the process, we decided we needed a little bit of help going through this process. We hired last year Tradition Energy through a requisition process. Through that process, throughout the last year, we've been going through identifying meters, looking through usages, and then in this, in this last couple of months, really starting to do the pricing with some potential retail electric providers for the city of Lubbock. Through that process, we have gotten pricing as of this morning, agreed to bring you a contract with TXU Energy. That rate is going to be right around seven cents for the electricity, so we will add on the transmission distribution to that. This is going to be a 24-month contract to get, to let us work into the retail electric market and then move forward. So if you want to put this into context, Mayor and Council, what we've been spending in our budget this year, fiscal year 2024, we have about $11.5 million for electric purchasing, electric services. Under this rate, that's going to be roughly about a $1.7 million savings on an annualized basis. So, Mayor, Council, with that, I'm going to pause here. We'll take any questions you have, and then if this is approved, we will sign this, get this over to TXU to lock in these rates.
All right, before we go into questions, Blue, let's go ahead and, is there a motion to approve 6.1? Thank you, Mr. Mass, thank you, Mr. Massengill. Somebody on my left. Ms. Joy, thank you for the second. All right. Ms. Patterson-Harris? So let's move into discussion. Mark, I think you had the questions coming up, and we also, we have Jennifer Mayberry. Jennifer, would you just briefly introduce yourself to Council, kind of tell who you are?
Thanks for having me. My name is Jennifer Mayberry with Tradition Energy. I'm an energy advisor there. I've been there, it'll be 13 years this summer. So my role is to aid the city in making the best contract choice. So yes, that involves price, but I've also been working with Blue to manage the terms and conditions of the agreement, to ensure that it gives you all the flexibility that you need getting into deregulation and managing this initial term to ensure success with not only your large number of meters, but the billing piece and all other projects that you have in the works. I've been watching Lubbock grow as I've been coming to visit Blue the last year or two, so we've accounted for that as well. And my role is to also look at the forward market and help make comment and recommendation on where we see electricity prices going and why, and what might lead you to one term over the other.
All right, thank you very much for being here today. All right, Mark, I think you had first up on questions.
And this is for Blue, the, what we have here is a rate not to exceed .08112. Does that include the pass-through cost that we have? Is that why it's a little bit higher than the contract price or what?
That was what we put in the caption, because we weren't going to have pricing until this morning. So we had to take preliminary pricing. We had to put a contingency in there to make sure that we did not exceed that parameter.
Okay, but that's a total cost with the pass-through?
That was, that's just the electric.
Just the electric.
That's not the transmission distribution.
My question.
Ms. Joy?
You've mentioned a number of meters, I think, for the public. They need to know just how many buildings that we operate that have to have electricity, how many other facilities, streetlights, for example, will be covered with that. Could you kind of be a little more detailed so I understand?
This covers, yes, ma'am. This covers all of our infrastructure and all of our buildings. So we have multiple buildings throughout the city. But you're right, we have streetlights that are metered, we have traffic lights that are metered. So, you know, you think all of your water, wastewater system, all those pump stations, it covers a wide array of city infrastructure.
And Blue, just a point. I think there's a specific time period where this gets to be a time crunch because rates don't become available until almost the last minute. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct. I'll let Jennifer.
Yes, so electricity rates change technically every second, but they trade on a 15-minute interval basis. So once you see a price, it is no longer valid 15 minutes from that point, which is why this is so time-sensitive. Now, of course, there is intent there from the suppliers when their curves come out in the morning to be able to hold that rate for as long as possible, which is why we're here today talking about those rates from this morning. Should a contract have to hold overnight for whatever reason, we missed a deadline for today, suppliers will review pricing based on their morning curve and book it, book any agreements to the best of their ability. So yes, it's a 15-minute interval price change, which leads us to the, you know, the time-sensitive portion of this.
So if we take a vote right now, we're saving money. Is that what you're saying?
That's right.
All right, any other questions, Blue or Jennifer? Okay, thank you for being here. Thank you, Blue. All right, we have a motion and a second on 6.1. All in favor of approval of 6.1, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, 6.1 carries 7-0. And if there's any other documents to sign, Courtney. Good? Okay. All right. Moving to agenda item 6.2, this is consider the resolution on our baby box program. Chief, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you all for being here today.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm very excited to come before you today to talk about a very worthwhile project. We are seeking your approval to begin. Safe Haven Baby Boxes are a device to enable parents to safely and anonymously surrender infants to authorities in the case that they can no longer care for them. It seems like every year we hear stories from around the country of infants being abandoned in ways that are unsafe, causing injury and death to the child. The goal of this program is to provide a safe alternative so that that unfortunate outcome is less likely to happen in Lubbock. The program has been very successful around the country. In fact, one of the Safe Haven Baby Boxes was utilized in Belen, New Mexico, just last week, which was the first baby box surrender in New Mexico for 2024, and the third one in the country in 2024. Joining me here at the podium are Ms. Summer Strauss, and Ms. Alicia Powell, and LPFFA President, Equipment Operator Joseph Wallace. These wonderful folks brought this idea to LFR and have worked tirelessly for this project to happen and at practically no cost for the city of Lubbock. I cannot thank them enough and all of the people and organizations that made this project come together, namely Turning Point Church, Tyner Construction, and several anonymous donors that insisted on remaining anonymous that made very large donations. So I want to thank them. With your approval, the device will be placed at Fire Station Number 9 at 4810 50th Street, providing easy access to the public, and together, we will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you all for being here today. Really appreciate it. Understand, there's some time crunches for some other people's schedules as well, so thanks for showing up. All right, let's go ahead and, can I go ahead and get a motion to approve 6.2? Oh, everybody wants in on this approval. Dr. Wilson, second, Ms. Martinez Garcia. And now we can have some questions, discussion for the chief or Joseph. It's a big box. Ms. Martinez Garcia?
I want to thank you guys and gals for this effort, this project, this commitment. It is so important, and I think within the last two days, we saw another infant. So it is an issue, and we're addressing it collectively. So thank you so much. And I'm going to be honest, when I first heard about this project, there's a box out there, and I thought that was it. I was like, wow, how are we going to put it in, position it? But this is wonderful. I think it's central to Lubbock, and I think it will be a benefit to all. So thank you again for your efforts.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, I want to echo Christie's sentiments. Thank you guys so much. I remember when Joseph brought this idea to several of us here on council, and what an amazing thing this is. And I may be wrong, but this may be the first fire department in the state of Texas that has And I may be wrong, but this may be the first fire department in the state of Texas that has, has put one of these boxes in.
Yes, ma'am, we believe so.
So I want to commend you guys. Everybody, this is an amazing thing for our city. And I believe, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but the first one is going to go at station nine, which is central, kind of in our city.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would like to ask all of you and our city manager, I would like to see more of these in our city. I know we're building station twenty currently, and so we've got constructive, construction plans, and I would like to see these added in multiple stations in northeast, south, and west Lubbock.
Yes, ma'am. Every new fire station we build from, from now on, we'll, we'll have one planned.
Thank you guys so much.
Any other comments or questions of Chief? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of six point two, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion unanimously carries seven zero. Thank you all very much, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll now move to agenda item six point three. Kristin, I got you close. Counsel, for planning purposes, I think we'll go ahead and anticipate six point six will take some time. I think we'll move six, three, four, five, seven, and eight. And then we'll move six, six to the end, so those with these very quick ones can go ahead and get out of here if they need to. All right, Kristin, we'll start with six point three.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. Item six point three is zone case thirty-one eleven A. The applicant is Park Hill for Star Care Specialty Health System. The request is to rezone property from high-density residential HDR to auto-urban commercial district AC. We sent out twenty-five notifications, receiving five in favor, zero in opposition. This property is located south of Nineteenth Street, west of Guava Avenue. Here's a notification map showing the properties that responded in favor of the request. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There is an existing facility at the southwest corner of the subject property. Current zoning is HDR. There is low-density, single-family residential to the north, south, east, and west, with some additional medium-density residential to the north. The future land use plan designates this property for parks and public and semi-public uses. Here's some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here's a graphic provided by the applicant just showing the adjacent uses. There's a baseball complex to the west, the existing facility on the property, Dunbar Historical Lake number six to the south with a recreational trail system. The future land use map designation for public and semi-public land uses is consistent with the request. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and appropriate at this location. It is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. East Nineteenth Street is designated as a minor arterial, east of Aspen Avenue, which is also designated as a local street. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, let's go ahead and just open up the public hearing on this one, Kristin. And then we'll move to any other questions counsel may have. So if you're new to this, on each of these items, we will have a separate hearing. We'll have a public hearing on each of these items where you'll have the opportunity to step forward to the podium, state your name, and again, your address, if you would, and then make your comments on the agenda item that we're specifically speaking of, which right now is six point three. All right, and then I will close the public hearing, and then counsel will take up its motion and discussion. All right, so at this time, we will conduct a public hearing for agenda item six point three. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition of six point three, you may step forward now. All right, seeing none, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of six point three, you may be recognized or step forward now.
My name is Jonna Anthony with Park Hill. Address is four-two-two eighty-fifth street, and we're here representing Star Care for this zoning case. And I'll tell you a little bit about Star Care. It's committed to providing access to the best behavioral health services to the community. It's also the designated local authority for mental health, intellectual disabilities, and substance abuse disorders. Star Care Center is Canyons, existing behavioral health facilities, which is in the bottom left-hand corner. Limit their ability to deliver patient and family care consistent with their long-term vision. Standards, modalities of care, patient demographics, and demand for services continue to evolve, and they're limited by their current situation. Working with Park Hill and several other consultants, we have developed a plan to expand their facilities. It's a sixty additional bed inpatient hospital and eighty thousand square feet. We're looking at that, putting it in the top left-hand corner out at the intersection of Nineteenth and Aspen Avenue. Includes a new inpatient hospital that will serve to provide therapeutic treatment spaces, increase the number of patients served, and provide intensive treatment subunit, and provide staff with adequate space to better deliver their high quality of care. In addition, there is a Hope Center for Health and Well-being. We, sorry, there's a diversion center. It's under the same roof, but a separate facility. Diversion Center care model designed to help people experiencing mental health distress avoid emergency rooms, jails, and inpatient hospitals when clinically appropriate. The Hope Center will utilize crisis evaluation services, twenty-three-hour extended observation, as well as community partner resources. So Star Care is really just looking to expand their hospital and working with all of the local groups, and a lot of them have spoken here as well today, and looking for this rezoning case so that we can provide this benefit to the community.
Would you tell me your first name again?
Jonna.
Jonna, and they made you come up and say all that, didn't they? Thank you, Jonna. You might stick close if there's any questions, okay? All right, any other parties wishing to speak in favor of six point three? All right, seeing none, I will now close the public hearing as to agenda item six point three. Is there a motion to approve six point three? Thank you, thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris, second by Ms. Joy. All right, any questions of the applicant's representative or any questions of staff? Ms. Joy.
Really haven't any questions. Jonna went through what she said pretty fast. But this will be the location for the diversion center that we've been talking about for years, which grew out of our homelessness committee recommendations. And that would be a place where it, for people who are picked up for misdemeanors, that they would have an option to go to the diversion center to get help if it's an alcohol problem, if it's a drug problem. But they would have an option not to go to the detention center, but to get help from these agencies. They're going to collaborate together to help with that. And so this is a location for that facility, and then for the expansion of beds that will be possible by some funding from the state legislature this session.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any other comments? Ms. Patterson Harris.
I was just going to say ditto to what Ms. Joy stated. And you're right, it's been something that we've been having conversation about for a while. It's, it will go to assisting, helping a situation that has really been imbalanced for so many years with those who are having mental health episodes or having some concerns there. Instead of taking them to the jail, quote unquote, then they'll be able to receive services to address whatever's going on with them at that time, which is, I believe, is a better solution. So I guess the vote this evening is to, is toward a better solution actually coming forth.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. All right, we have a motion and a second on six point three. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, moving along to six point four, Ms. Sager.
Item six point four is zone case thirty-four ninety-three. The applicant is R two M Engineering for Land Shark Commercial Properties. The request is to rezone property from low-density, single-family SF-two to neighborhood commercial NC. We sent out thirty notifications, receiving two in favor. This property is located west of University Avenue at a hundred and fifty-first street. Here is the notification map showing the two properties that responded in favor. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. The current zoning is low-density, single-family SF-two, and it is surrounded by SF-two, and property to the south is outside city limits. The future land use plan designates this property for residential low-density land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here's a graphic provided by the applicant. The future land use map designation for residential low-density land uses is not consistent with the request for NC zoning. However, given its location along the thoroughfare, it is appropriate in this location. The request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. It is located north and south of a hundred and fifty-first street, which is a local street, and along University Avenue, which is a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sager. You might stick close. All right, we're going to go through this again on six point four. I will now open the public hearing as to agenda item six point four. If there is anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to six point four, you may step forward now. All right, seeing none, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of six point four, you may step forward at this time.
My name is Jason Brewer. I represent R two M Engineering here. I have no additional comments on this case, but I am here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of six point four? All right, I will now close the public hearing as to agenda item six point four. Is there a motion to approve six point four? Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right, do we have any other discussion, any questions of Ms. Sager, questions of staff, or the applicant is here, Jason's available? Ms. Joy. All right, all in favor of approval of agenda item six point four, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, we'll now move to six point five. Ms. Sager.
Item six point five is zone case thirty-four ninety-six. The applicant is OJD Engineering for Toot and Totem. The request is to rezone property from low-density, single-family SF-two to auto-urban commercial AC. We sent out five notifications, receiving no response. This property is at the corner of the future Loop Eighty-Eight and University Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. The current zoning is low-density, single-family SF-two. North of this property is outside city limits, and there is additional heavy commercial to the south. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here's a graphic provided by the applicant. The future land use map designation for commercial land uses is consistent with the request. The request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. University Avenue is designated as a principal arterial, and a hundred and thirtieth street, future Loop Eighty-Eight, is designated as a freeway. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Sager. All right, at this, at this time, I will now open, open the public hearing as to agenda item six point five. If anyone here is wishing to speak in opposition to six point five, you may step forward now. All right, seeing none, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of six point five, you may step forward at this time.
Yeah, Michael Adams with OJD Engineering, representing Toot and Totem. And I have nothing else to add, but we'll answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you, Michael. May stick close if there's any questions. All right, any other persons wishing to speak in favor of six point five, you may step forward at this time. All right, I will now close the public hearing as to agenda item six point five. Is there a motion to approve six point five? Thank you, Ms., thank you, Dr. Wilson, second by Mr. Massengill. All right, do we have any questions? Michael here is here on behalf of the applicant. Kristin can answer any questions? All right, all in favor of approval of six point five, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. All right, now we'll move to six point seven. Kristin, turn it over to you.
Item six point seven is zone case twenty-nine twenty-three A. The applicant is Hugo Reed and Associates for Tom and Brenda Jones. The purpose is to rezone property from high-density residential HDR to neighborhood commercial NC. We sent out forty-three notifications, receiving zero in favor and two in opposition. This property is located east of Efland Avenue, north of Ninetieth. Here's a response map showing the two properties that responded in opposition. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There is a church immediately north of the subject property and residential to the east and south. The current zoning is high-density residential with low-density SF-two to the northeast and south, and industrial park to the west. The future land use plan designates this property for low-density residential land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. This is a graphic provided by the applicant showing that even if the subject property takes a portion of the parking lot currently used by the church today, the church will still be in compliance with their parking requirement. This is another graphic provided by the applicant just showing the proposed subject property. The future land use map designation for low-density residential land uses does not conform to the request. However, given that this is along Efland Avenue, it is appropriate in this location. The zone changes in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed location is along Efland Avenue, which is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
All right, thank you, Kristin. All right, I will now open a public hearing as to agenda item six point seven. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to six point seven, you may come forward now. All right, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of six point seven, you may come forward at this time.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel members. I'm Terry Holman with Hugo Reed and Associates. We're at sixteen oh one Avenue YN. I'd like to thank Ms. Sager for leaving this graphic up. It helps us tell our story about as well as anything. Representing Thomas and Brenda Jones, they are the landowners on this property, but as you can see, the, the church operates on the property, has been in operation there for, since around the late nineties, early two thousands. This property was converted from the old A two zoning to what is now HDR, which is high-density residential. I'd like to note to you that in the current zoning district, HDR, we're allowed to build a childcare, a hospital rehab, under five acres, medical labs, even a vertical mixed-use multifamily with a commercial if we so chose. What we'd like to do is, since the southern half of this property has been left unused for a number of years, Mr. and Mrs. Jones feel like they would like to maybe set that part of the property up for maybe future commercial development. Obviously, based on its size, you're not going to get a big shopping center there, but there's, there's quite a bit of low-level retail that we think would be a candidate for this location. And by the way, we are asking for NC zoning, which is the most restrictive commercial that's, that's allowed to us under the current code. The, as Ms. Sager noted, obviously, we've done the math, and we've determined that the, the little small end of the parking lot is not necessary for the church to meet code. It, we, we think it's a good fit for retail at this location. There were two letters of opposition turned in. I was able to speak to one of the neighbors. I can't testify that I changed any minds, but, you know, at least had a chance to visit with him. The other one, I, I left an email and a phone call and was not able to speak with him. But the thing that we have going for us is when we have this commercial, light commercial, you know, in essence, backing into the existing single family, the new code does require pretty extensive screening requirements, the buffer yards that we've all heard so much about, so. And I'd like to also note to you that there's industrial on the opposite side of the thoroughfare, so we just believe this is the best fit for this property. With that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
You might stick close as well.
You bet.
All right, any other parties wishing to speak in favor of six point seven? All right, I will now close the public hearing as to agenda item six point seven. Is there a motion to approve six point seven? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right, any other questions of Ms. Sager, questions of Terry? Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of approval of six point All right, all in favor of approval of 6.7, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. I'm sorry, Ms. Martinez Garcia did step out. Thank you, Mr. Massengo. That carries six to zero. All right, now we will move to 6.8. Last one before we get back to the 6.6 I know many are waiting on. Thank you for indulging us so we can get these quick ones done. All right, Ms. Sager, 6.8.
Item 6.8 is Zone Case 3495. The applicant is Mark Endeavor Clark Trust. The request is to rezone a property from low-density, single-family SF2 to heavy commercial HC. We sent out 19 notifications, receiving one in favor. This property is located just south of the Marsha Sharp Freeway. Here's a response map showing the one response we did receive in favor. And here is an aerial view of the subject property. There is additional commercial to the southwest, residential to the south, and a tree farm to the east. The current zoning is low-density, single-family SF2. There is additional heavy commercial to the west, and additional industrial park to the northwest. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here are some additional photos provided by the applicant of the surrounding area. The future land use map designation for commercial land uses is consistent with the request. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. The location is along Marsha Sharp Freeway, which is a freeway. Staff recommends approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sager. All right, I'm going to now open the public hearing as to Agenda Item 6.8. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition of that zone case? You may step forward at this time. All right, seeing none, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of 6.8? You may step forward at this time.
Good afternoon, I'm Deborah Clark, and I'm owner, and this is my husband, Mark Clark. We've been...we've been in business for 43 years since October of 1981, and now we'd, you know, like to make sure that it's zoned correctly, so... Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Thank you.
You guys did a great job, thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of 6.8? You may step forward at this time. All right, I will now close the public hearing as to 6.8. We have the Clarks here, we have Kristen here available for questions. Is there a motion to approve 6.8? Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right, Ms. Joy, you had a question?
Kristen, where did she go? There she is. We'd call a cleanup, is that correct? In other words, they have operated this business at that location since 1981. And they're...they've either retired or retiring, and probably have a sale, something pending, and they've got to get the zoning correct. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks for doing that.
All right, any other questions to Ms. Sager? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of 6.8, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion does carry seven to zero. All right, now we will move to Agenda Item 6.6. Eric? I think you're up.
Mayor, Council, good afternoon. Good to be with you. Eric Rahino, Assistant City Manager. Appreciate you giving me an opportunity to visit with you about the transfer station project. I'd like to run through the need for the project. Obviously, council's very familiar with the project. You've taken some prior action, which we'll cover. Also want to visit with you about the benefits of the project, prior actions, and we'll get into the actual site itself, as well as discuss some road projects and, you know, why this site was selected. Following my presentation, Mr. Wood Franklin has some aerials from Google Earth, or other similar facilities, as well as this site. And Ms. Haney's also here to address any questions you might have. And following that, Ms. Sager will give her presentation, walk you through the P&amp;Z meeting and their action. But I'll start out, so on any given day, the city of Lubbock runs 47, 48 routes, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday's our catch-up day. We use Wednesday quite frequently to play catch-up from the days of picking up garbage. On average, it takes two hours round trip for a garbage truck to go to and come back to Lubbock from the landfill. The recent study that we did shows that the average garbage truck, and you get 47, 48, the average garbage truck, based on two and a half trips, spends about four hours on the road, traveling to and from the landfill. That's four hours that we're not picking up garbage. Probably...probably part of the reason that you all get calls that we do on a regular basis. As Lubbock grows, south and southwest especially, it's really important that we improve our efficiency. The transfer station in this location is one thing that will allow us to do that and improve our efficiency. I've got some pictures I'll show you of some other facilities as we go throughout. You know, one of the big benefits that we're gonna see with the transfer station is obviously cut travel time to minutes instead of hours. You know, they'll have a drop-off point in Lubbock from there. That garbage truck, you know, within a few minutes can go back to their route, instead of traveling, you know, for two hours to and from the landfill. That will certainly help collection. We do anticipate that will reduce, obviously, the mileage and the maintenance of these trucks. They're very, very heavy maintenance that occurs on these vehicles on a regular basis. Council's taken several actions. This has actually been looked at several times, you know, this council and prior councils, dating back three studies to 2008. The most recent study that we're gonna talk about today is from 2020. The big thing that came from that study was determining the waste centroid, as Mr. Franklin refers to it, for Lubbock, and takes into account the growth. After assessing multiple sites, the site that we'll visit here in about...or that I'll show you here in a little bit, was purchased last year by the council. We closed on it last year. We took into account route efficiency and optimization, location, cost, and availability, and trying to stay as close to the waste centroid as possible, and I think this site accomplishes that. Council also has a CIP, a capital improvement project, that you've funded the last couple of years. This year, you brought on an additional 14 million to what you had prior for a total of 32.7, which will allow for the construction and permitting of this facility. To date, you've spent six...about $6.6 million. That includes the land, that includes the study, prior studies. We've also toured...several of you have toured facilities. The one I'm gonna show you next here, let me see if I can...this is one that we toured in Richardson. There was a couple of us, well, staff members, that toured this facility in Richardson. It's in, you know, one thing I'll emphasize, the facility is all enclosed. This is the inside of that facility while they were operating. There's a few other aerials of facilities that our staff's familiar with. You know, they're paying toward the largest transfer station in the state of California in...I'm sorry, in the nation, in California. But that just kinda gives you an idea, and Mr. Franklin will go through, and we'll be able to zoom in and out with Google Earth here in a little while, to walk you through some other sites. This is the actual site itself. The area in yellow is the 70 acres that the city of Lubbock purchased. The area in red would be the operational area for the transfer station, and the blue would be the transfer station itself. We're looking at about a 36,000-square-foot building out of a 70-acre site. One reason we selected this site with that much acreage is to allow it to be far away from anything around it, so that this site allows us to do that, to centralize it.
If there's gonna be comments, it will be made outside. We're not gonna have this today. So if you have comments, you will have a public hearing time. If not, you can step outside.
You know, another reason this site was selected is because of the freeway and the thoroughfares around it. You have the Marsha Sharp to the south, you have Upland to the east, you have 66, another thoroughfare to the north, then you have Alcove to the west. As you know, Upland, 66 to 82nd, recently came back from bidding. That project will start this summer, will be completed next summer, expanding to five lanes. Also, as you know, we have a bond project for 66 from Alcove to Upland to expand that road, widen it to three lanes. That project is funded through the bond, and we're looking to move that up and run it in conjunction with the transfer station construction, so that these roads are available when that time comes. The city of Lubbock also, you know, will...if we access any part of Alcove, it'll be 76 South going onto the Marsha Sharp. So the city of Lubbock, and talking to staff, we're committed to making those improvements from Alcove, 76 South going onto the Marsha Sharp. I know there's other discussions ongoing about the other parts, but that's the portion that we would utilize, so there's...we've been discussing, you know, what we can do internally with that if the other funding does not come online, so we are prepared for that, and we know that's an item, an issue. This is an overall layout of the proposed site, and Mr. Franklin can get into more details if you have questions. This just shows kind of the site layout, incoming, you know, traffic. We do own the site, as you know, north of this site to access 66. We have that, we closed on that late last year, so that 66 is an option for us, and again, that's a funded bond project that we have. Talking a little bit about traffic counts. The Marsha Sharp Freeway westbound frontage generates about 9,800 vehicles per day. You know, we're basically talking about adding the 50 waste trucks we already had. Those trucks are already on the street, they're not new trucks. We would be adding seven transfer vehicles of your larger semis to transfer. Those would be new, but when you look at two and a half loads, and you take into account the existing trucks that are already driving the streets, you're looking at about 145 trips for garbage trucks, 29 for the transfer vehicles, and about 100 for sap vehicles, so 276 trips. And again, the Marsha Sharp westbound frontage was about 9,800 cars a day. So 276 trips of vehicles that mostly are already on the road today. Just a few key takeaways, you know, roadway projects are supporting the project, are funded, they're underway. Household waste is the only thing that will be accepted at this facility, so what's already sitting behind in the alleys and dumpsters and polycarts would be...would be the waste that would be brought to this facility. Facility's all enclosed. The facility will not hold garbage overnight the majority of the time. If we have a weather event where the landfill closes, we may be forced to hold overnight, but the goal on most days will be to not hold any waste overnight. And again, it's all enclosed. This will be city-only use, no private haulers. The facility, again, we're here for a zone change request. The city will abide by the buffer yard requirements set in the UDC, just like any other light industrial site, so we will certainly do our best to go above and beyond those even. The facility's gonna be heavily regulated by TCEQ. We have several other facilities, and there's a couple that I'll show you, that are already heavily regulated by TCEQ. This is pump station number 10, and it's located at 82nd and Memphis. This is pump station 14, located at 74th and Milwaukee, so again, some very heavily congested areas there as well. Next steps for us, again, today's a pretty key step. It's a key step for us to move forward with the rezone, from single-family to industrial park district. From here, we would then proceed on with finalizing our application to the TCEQ, submit that. That could take up to 12 months. We hope not, but we're planning for 12 months. During that time, the TCEQ is reviewing the application. We're going back and forth with them. We'll be finalizing the design, which we think will take about nine months. And from there, from the time we get the permit, finished design, construction could take up to 24 months, so realistically upwards of 36 months possibly. But with that, any questions for me before I pull Wood up? And he'll pull up some aerials to show you, and we'll be available for questions as well.
Let's go ahead and pull Wood up, Eric. I think we'll go ahead and finish up any aerials or any information that may assist any in the public hearing, then we'll do the public hearing, and then we can take questions after that.
Thank you, good afternoon, you, Council. Gonna use...I know a lot of y'all have already visited a transfer station, had a tour. I know you got two, one in California, so you've seen more than one mayor. Not everybody's got to see a transfer station, so we're gonna guide you through here on Google Earth and try to use technology to travel around and look at existing sites, 'cause it's very difficult. We can show engineering plans up here all day, but it's kinda hard to get an idea of what's going on. What we're looking at here is Lubbock, and so down here in the southwest corners where we are proposing to put this transfer station, as we zoom in right here, I've kind of taken our engineering drawing, putting it over...and given an overlay of the site. Again, the 70 acres that we're talking about, the city's purchased, is highlighted in yellow, and about our 29 acres that will be our permitted solid waste transfer station is in this red boundary, with the building shown here in blue. We have Upland over to the east, 66 to the north, and Alcove to the west. Eric kinda mentioned that we have purchased additional property for drainage for some of our roadway projects, and with that drainage project and purchase of that land, we have the ability now to connect this property to 66, so that we have two ingress and egresses, so we can ingress and egress over here on 76th Street, Alcove, and we can also go up our driveway here, feature driveway, onto 66th Street. What does a transfer station look like? I've got some transfer stations here that we'll go over. First one is the city of Wichita Falls. This is a transfer station over here, and this is the property in question right here. So you can see their ingress and egress, and then they actually have two sites as well coming on the two roads. This is commercial property over here, very similar to Canyon West, restaurants and other facilities, and you can see that we have an apartment complex under construction right here. For reference, I have a 1,000-foot radius on each one of these that I'll go ahead and show, just so you can see what's within a 1,000-foot radius here, and there are several restaurants involved, and if you want me to zoom in, I can zoom in, or if you wanna look at street view, we can kind of look at those as well. But kind of coming into our 1,000-foot radius, here's what this site looks like. Another site is in Richardson. Again, this is this site right here, shown on the map. It's right next to a golf course, country club, and they do have one ingress and egress, and they have a fire station to the east of this property as well. Again, I'll go ahead and put a 1,000-foot radius, so you can see what's going on within a 1,000-foot of this property, where it touches some...touches some commercial industrial over to the southwest, and then the golf course and some residential to the north. Another piece of property is in Dallas. Over here, this one is a transfer station, as we zoom in here. Go ahead and put our 1,000-foot radius on this one as well. We have some apartments over here to the west of it, southwest of it. There is a creek over here, which is an environmentally sensitive situation. Obviously, that's something that we're concerned about with the environment. We're heavily regulated, as Eric mentioned, with TCEQ. This is just kind of an example that it's something that can be done. To the south of it, they have a high school that actually shares the same drive and shares the same thoroughfare access. And then a little bit further to the north, excuse me, we have a country club and golf course over here, and then some hospital areas over to the west of this property. Plano. Here's another one, it's...excuse me, on adjacent to two thoroughfares. There's what we see here, some pump stations, very similar to what was shown at the end of Eric's presentation that we have in our site. Again, our 1,000-foot radius. This is including the intersection of the two thoroughfares. We have some CVS and some small commercial, also in getting into residential and apartment complexes over here. And go ahead and zoom back to the city of Lubbock transfer station. Here we are again, and I'll go ahead and put that same 1,000-foot radius circle on our property. You can see that the majority of our property lies within that 1,000-foot radius. We have some of the light industrial to the north of us, but inside that radius, but we don't even reach the arterial streets. Go ahead and exclude...include a half-mile radius, and within that half-mile radius, we start to see where we get some residential properties inside our buffer zone. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions, or we can virtually travel back to any one of these.
Thank you, Wood. Mr. McPrayer, do you have a question of Wood at this time?
Uh, Wood, do you know what size acres, the facilities, you've shown us what they cover?
Majority of those are anywhere from seven to 10 acres.
Seven to 10 acres?
Yes, sir.
And ours?
Ours is...
How much will ours actually occupy of that 70 acres?
Right here, this red zone right shown in our transfer station site is 29 acres.
How much?
29.
29 acres.
So we have some parking lots and additional infrastructure put in here. I think we mentioned that we'll have a citizens' convenience center right here that we kinda have at the Uniteds, so we'll have that option for some recycling to take place in as well.
And then my second question is what...you know what size these facilities are as far as square footage versus ours?
Um, I...they're very similar in size as far as properties of the building. Brenda may be a little bit more versed on the tonnage that they... Brendan may be a little bit more versed on the tonnage that they receive and they process. But all of those are very similar in tonnage and serviceability of our transfer station that we're proposing, which is why we chose to-
Around thirty-six thousand.
Chose to, yeah, that's why we chose those sites to show.
All right, thank you, Wood.
Sure.
I'm sure we'll have some questions for you. You've got Ms. Haney close as well. Is that right?
I'll stay close.
All right. All right, this time I'm going to open the public hearing as to agenda item six point six. We will open the public hearing. A few rules for you, you heard it. A few people go before you on some of the other items. Please stay on topic. We will not take any personal attacks of any parties or any staff members. Once you're done speaking, you'll have an opportunity to have the next person come up. If you would, please come up and state your name and your address and now we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to agenda item six point six, you may step forward
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Troy Brooks. I live at seventy-four fifty sixty-sixth Street, seven-nine-four-oh-seven. This is about two-hundred yards from our house across, we live north sixty-sixth at Wausau. And I'm very disappointed in the way this was handled. At the first meeting at Alco School, they said that they don't use tax money, that they have their own funds from collecting trash and they can do what they want to. They don't have to present it to the public at all. And very disappointed in that. And they've now, at the end of the meeting, they said they were looking at buying land so they could have the right of way to go to sixty-sixth. Sixty-sixth, going to there is a really bad idea because that's where all the school traffic is, that's where it backs up every day. Going to sixty-sixth is a very bad idea. What they had originally said was they were going to go out seventy-sixth Street to Alco and then go to, under the interstate, Marshes Sharp Freeway and then go on Marshes Sharp Freeway. And that's a total change from what they originally said and what they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. And if you do come forward, if you would, please, this is recorded, so please speak into the microphone or pull that a little closer. Ms. Segger, would you pull that mic forward a little bit? All right, thank you.
I got some handouts here. I didn't make the cutoff. Okay, well, those are going out. My name's Wesley Houck. I'm from six-oh-eight North Eleventh in Wolfherth, in Preston Manor. Yes, six-oh-eight North Eleventh Street, Wolfherth. Again, my name's Wesley Houck. I'm a builder. I'm also a father of four. Two of my boys currently go to the local schools and I'll have two more in school here shortly. Everyone get, get one? Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me take the time to go over a few concerns the community has about this proposed transfer station. I stand here on behalf of over a thousand others in the community who are greatly concerned and thoroughly opposed to the current proposed location for this waste transfer station. We are concerned about the negative impacts this facility will generate on our community, on our children's safety, our roadways and our home. If you go to the second slide, and I apologize, we missed the cutoff, so I'll explain what I can. To start off, this slide is highlighting children's safety. To start off, I want to chat about our children's safety and I know that the council is just as concerned about the safety of our youth as we are. And I'd like to take a minute to outline a few key points that were not fully presented to the committee. There are two new schools that were just constructed, constructed in the area. Both new schools are within five thousand feet of this new transfer facility. Based on the new school zoning, many families will have to drive on these very roads on the way to and way home from school. The traffic that will be through the, brought to the area from the new facility will be greatly impacted by our children's, will greatly impact our children's safety by introducing large vehicles to this area that are not, to areas and roads that are not designed to support this sort of traffic. Even the future expansion plans, even the future expansion plan, excuse me, this is a residential area. And with the large vehicles in the area, they're not designed to support this kind of traffic. Oh, excuse me, a little nervous here. Appreciate it. This is where our kids go to school. This is where they call home. This is where they play outside with their friends and where they learn to drive. This area is booming with homes and is slowly but surely filling up. If this proposed location does not become a wa, does not become a waste transfer facility, it will not be long before it is bought up by a developer for future neighborhoods. That is why the land was annexed back in two thousand and eighteen. It was annexed in a zone as low-density residential area for this exact reason. Voting against this proposed site will allow the city to collect additional taxes from these homes that would be built in this area. The average neighborhood of this size is roughly two-hundred-and-one homes. And if you vote to leave this a residential area, that could bring over a million dollars a year in tax revenues. And to highlight, sorry, I want to highlight a few things on the image that you have. So it highlights in, on our map, we have nearby schools, which is a total of one-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-seven students between Alco Middle School and Ridgeview Elementary School, both about four to five thousand feet from the site. Then in the nearby community, we have one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight homes and they all range from point-three-one miles to the furthest being point-eight-five miles from the proposed site. And then lastly, there's a hospital, Grace Surgical Hospital, which is only twenty-two-hundred-and-ninety-seven feet from the site, just to give more context. Moving to the next slide. Here's an overview of the local roadways. As many of you may or may not know, the traffic in this area is already pushing and exceeding the limits of its capabilities. As Commissioner Kovar, forgive me if I butchered the name, has stated, these roads can barely handle the local traffic as is. While we do not understand the, while we do understand that there are plans underway to develop the local roadways, as we have seen with Alco, these expansions do not always happen in the timeline that we expect. We are concerned that this could happen again and feel, and feel we may be getting the cart before the horse. We urge the council to consider moving the station or at a minimum, delay the construction until the roads are completed and, and other sites have been reviewed by the council, not just the applicant. I want to read on the slide here, we have current road infrastructure. Alco is twenty-three feet wide, two lanes, no mention plans for expansion. Seventy-sixth Street, two feet wide, two lanes, no mention plans of expansion. Upland, planned expansion to five lane, expected completion date is two thousand and twenty-five. Sixty-sixth has not been designed. Expected completion date would be twenty-twenty-six to twenty-twenty-seven. And then we have, facility is planned to be completed between two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and twenty-seven, so you can see some overlap there. And just also to give some reference there, on the road widths, your typical parking space is about nine feet wide, just to give some perspective. Moving to the next slide. This illustrates the road study that we could find. In the previous zoning and planning meeting, it was advised to the zoning committee that this transfer station would increase traffic by approximately one percent. I've searched for the infrastructure, for the infrastructure and have been unable to locate this study, as is my understanding that it has not been finalized. Here is a last, here is the last publicly available traffic study that was done at this location where trucks would be coming in and out. It's hard to see, but down there, I think we had thirty-three-hundred for the traffic volume in this area. Oh, here we go. When this study was completed, there was three-thousand-three-hundred-and-one vehicles that drove this road during the twenty-four hour period. Now sixty-two percent of that traffic, that's two-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty, or excuse me, two-thousand-forty-three vehicles, they tend to cluster between the hours of seven AM and seven PM. So that was the peak volume. This study was completed in two thousand and two when the city of Wolfherth's population was six-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-nine residents. The city is now approximately seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-five residents. This is a fourteen percent increase in population. Ms., and I'm going to butcher this name and I apologize, Mr. Ri, Riheino? Riheino. I apologize. My last name's Houck, so I get that all the time. Riheino, oh, I'm sorry. Mentioned in the meeting that there was new traffic studies conducted in January. Can he share that study with the council so that you all can reference the material when deciding? This would allow you to ask pertinent questions like, in January, was this traffic, when in January was this traffic study taken? Was it on a school day? That would make a massive difference. Were there accounting for increase in traffic when the new elementary school opens? The next slide. As stated in the zoning meeting by Mr. Riheino, oh, apologize.
Just say Eric.
Eric, okay, appreciate it. I apologize, whoever, yes. No disrespect meant. In the zoning, zoning meeting with Eric, the, there would be two to three collection vehicles entering the facility about every fifteen minutes. In our math, that put us on a ten-hour day between a hundred and sixty to two-hundred-and-forty collection vehicles entering and exiting the facility daily. Now, looking at the semi-traffic, that is six to seven trucks, two to three times a day. And that's an additional twelve to twenty-one semi-trucks a day. So we are looking at introducing about a hundred and seventy-two to two-hundred-and-sixty, I just heard maybe around two-seventy-ish, commercial vehicles to this area daily. An area with kids on the, on their way to school, student drivers learning to drive, kids walking to school, kids playing sports at the local Apex facility, buses taking full loads of children to and from school. And just to highlight what was on that slide is a quote from the minutes taken at the zoning and planning. And I'll just read it really quick. The study projects, quote, "Study projects one percent increase in traffic with an average of two to three collection vehicles entering the facility every fifteen minutes. There will be heavier flow in the morning with regular routes being Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday and Friday, ten hours a day." A little bit further. There will be six to seven semi-trucks, which will make two to three routes to Abernathy daily, just to verify what we had said. Moving to the next slide. Now, I'd like to, I'd like to you guys to have a visual on the roads that will be filled with these additional two-hundred-and-seventy-two to two-hundred-and-sixty-one commercial vehicles currently planned per day. This does not highlight future expansion as we grow as a community either. Now first, we'll take a look at image one, which is in the green oval. This image, flipping the paper again, I apologize. This image is a westbound view of eighty-second frontage road where the semis and trash trucks would be, would need to make a right turn onto Alco. We highlighted this turn because if you see on the next slide, this shows that the turn that these trucks are expected to take onto Alco, you can see we put, and I wish you guys could see this, we put a compass to show the degree of the turn. And as you can see, it's roughly between a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty-degree turn with a slight upward hill knock. These are the concerns that we have with this. Westbound eighty-second frontage road is a fifty to fifty-five mile per hour traffic flow road. Whether it's stated or not, that's kind of what you experience when you're on that road. To avoid tipping, approach will be very slow by these garbage trucks coming to this turn. That's going to affect the flow of that road. This turn will also be made two to three times every fifteen minutes, also in the dawn darkness. So in the early mornings, this will be happening on a very fast road. This turn is directly onto a railroad track crossing. That's a factor to consider. And lastly, eighty-second Ridge Road is a single-lane road until right at that meeting point with Alco Road. Imagine the maneuvering that will be encouraged by this. If you flip the slide. Now, this is a north, looking north on Alco. So you can see a couple of things here. First, you can note the condition of the road. You can just see right off, just a quick glance, all the potholes. I also want to note that this road is twenty-three feet wide. Currently, there are no mention plans for expansion, to expand, excuse me, that we are aware of. And then I also want to note the railroad tracks that are used daily. I know it because I hear it. Now, switching to the next slide, we're back to the aerial view there. We're going to change our focus to image two, the yellow oval. This is seventy-sixth Street, currently the only access route to the new proposed facility. Note the current, the current disrepair and condition of the road. This will be the entrance and exit street to, for these hundred-and-seventy-two to two-hundred-and-sixty-one commercial vehicles per day. I wish you guys could see this. As a reminder, seventy-sixth is twenty feet wide without much shoulder. Trash trucks on average are eight and a half feet wide. So two trash trucks passing one another will leave only a foot between the passing trucks and a foot between each truck and the edge of the roadway. To my knowledge, there is no plans of expansion on this roadway. Next slide. This image here shows an aerial view that the trash trucks and semis will have to take. It is seventy, seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven feet to merge across traffic onto a U-turn lane to avoid the traffic signal. Again, this is an eighty-second frontage road, for context. So we have fifty-five, fifty, fifty-five mile an hour traffic. They have less than eight hundred feet to merge across this traffic, two lanes, to get to a U-turn to avoid a traffic signal. As a reminder, this area is heavily used by children on their way to school, workforce commuters, new student drivers on the roadway, and the, again, the speeds are fifty to fifty-five traffic. Note also, this is one of the main arteries in and out of Wolfherth, or in, I guess. Next slide. Shifting over this, let's talk about the potential future of the station. These were the plans shown at the zoning and planning meeting. The applicant outlined the commit, to the committee, that this was a small facility with a future potential of fleet storage, road maintenance vehicle storage, a gas station, a community recycle facility. as well as sand and gravel storage for snow care. Flip the next page. Now, these were the plans that were submitted to the city that I located on the city of Lubbock's website. The applicant failed to mention to the Planning and Zoning Committee that they were, that they have plans to expand the facility. As you all know, if they are extending the facility, expanding the facility, that likely means the number of vehicles needed to service this fast-growing part of the community is going to increase, in turn, increasing the number of commercial vehicle traffic on these intersections and roadways. Note, applicant mentioned the goal was not to exceed 500 vehicles a day at the meeting. Again, we ask the council to please compel the applicant to look for other areas that are more conducive, excuse me, to the future of the growth. For example, the next slide. You can see Ree Center in the middle. Lastly, we would like to plead with the council to have the applicant bring you the other options previously explored for review. In addition, we ask the council to require the applicant to look at these areas that were already planned to be in industrial locations. Note the area above, for example. Here is a closer view of the street, street names of the area that we are looking at as an example. This example shows, shown above, is south of the Ree Center, right above the, or right on Research Boulevard, which will become Lubbock Outer Loop, currently under construction, and intersects with 19th Street. This is an extremely undeveloped area with very few homes within a one-mile radius. One-mile radius. This location would also have access to Lubbock Outer Loop and 19th Street, a future-looking proposal, as it will keep semi-traffic on the fringe of Lubbock. This is already zoned as an industrial area. While I'm not a specialist on determining sites for waste transfer facilities, I was able to find this site easily, with little effort, for a potential option. I have a hard time believing someone that is better specialized could not find even a better site location than I have. Again, we urge city council to compel the applicant to produce the other proposed areas and compel the applicant to investigate areas especially that are already industrially zoned, with little to no current residents to be impacted. We're on home stretch. Okay, finally, looking at the pathway here. So in the last zoning and planning meeting, the South Plains Mall was referred to as the, and I might be misquoting here, but as the city central for the truck route proposed. In effect, this is the efficient, ideal center point, you could, you could say. With that in mind, it would take approximately eight minutes to get from the city center, the center location, to the current proposed transfer facility. Now, if you look at the next slide, again, using the example, the Ree Center. Here you can see, this would add only five-minute commute in additional truck time. But this would put the transfer station in an industrial area, with no local schools, with plenty of room for expansion, and easy access to all their routes now and into the future. Again, I want to thank you, council members and mayor, for your time and your ear. I hope you can see and understand the passion behind the current thousands of people, plus all who have signed the petition, oh, excuse me, 1,000 people plus, who have signed the petition against this location for a waste transfer station, and the 1,929 families who will be impacted by this proposed location. I would also like to give a thanks to Nate Douglas for putting this presentation together. And lastly, I have here a packet. This is all names of people who have signed the petition. Oddly enough, if I had to put a percentage to it, probably 75% are from Lubbock and not Wolfherth. So I wanted to put that context. But in a very short amount of time, we have already gathered 1,152 signatures. That is all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Howke. We're going to take about a 10-minute break. We'll be back, let's come back, well, let's go ahead and make it an even round number. We'll come back at 4:35. All right, it is 4:36, and we are back from a short recess. We are still in the public hearing under Agenda Item 6.6, and those wishing to speak in opposition. Any other parties wishing to speak in opposition, you may come forward at this time.
Hi, my name's Gianna Knoll. I live at 8308 County Road 6960, Lubbock County. I'm against Section 6.6.
Hold on, Gianna, can you just give us that address one more time?
8308 County Road 6960.
All right.
Got it? Okay, so I get really nervous, and I, my voice clavers, but this is really important to me, so I'm going to stand up here and tremble to death.
Take that deep breath, and there you go.
Okay. I'm just a grandma, and I live very close to this transfer station. And I've been trying to learn about this as fast as I can, doing lots of research, sometimes getting some contradictory information. But I feel good about what I have to present today. We are concerned about what appears to be some very real deception from the city to the residents of our area. In September, at the town hall meeting, Ms. Brenda Haney told us that 100% no alternative to trash transfer station would be built in this location, and that every permit required had been approved by the city and the state, and there was nothing we as citizens could do about it. This was not true. The city still had to have a dramatic zoning change, and even today, the city still needs permits from the Texas Department of Transportation and from the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality. At that same meeting, we were told that the city of Lubbock was being a good neighbor, and that the city of Wolfherth, Lubbock County, and Friendship ISD had all been informed of the trash transfer station while it was in the early planning stages, and that they had agreed to it. This is not true. I spoke with Wolfherth City Manager, Mr. Chriswell, County Commissioner, Terrence Kovar, and we heard from Friendship ISD Superintendent, Dr. McCord, at the recent zoning meeting. When I spoke with them, all were against the location. There's a petition of over 1,000 signatures from people opposed to placing the trash transfer station at this location. The city is not being a good neighbor to these people. In general, the people that sign this petition are people that care enough about their community to get on a vote. These are people that expect their elected officials to stand up for what is right, what is good for their friends and neighbors now, regardless of concerns for future interactions with the city of Lubbock. I'm speaking now to the county and Wolfherth city governments. We have additional concerns. At the zoning meeting on February 1st, we heard some very interesting comments from the zoning committee. The committee was very confused and upset as to why the city had spent $6 million tax dollars on this property without first obtaining the required zoning change. Please don't take my word for it. This is online. Watch the meeting. I've submitted some pictures. And you can see the pictures of Alcove Road. Those were taken this morning. We were told in the zoning meeting that there could be up to 500 trucks on that road. And at that meeting, we were told that all trucks would be entering and exiting the property via Alcove. There was no promise of a road on 66th. Mr. Franklin said that he was trying to acquire that property. And he said multiple times, please watch the online video. I went out and measured Alcove today. There's potholes. There's lots of side erosion. With the potholes, there's less than 18 feet wide width on places on that road. There's absolutely no way a school bus and a garbage truck could pass each other. The city has compared Alcove traffic to the traffic study done on Indiana. This is not accurate. Alcove is a little, teeny, tiny, two-lane road. You cannot compare how traffic will impact it based on a study with Indiana. At that zoning meeting, Mr. Franklin assured the zoning committee that he would be building acceleration and de-accelerations and adding them to Alcove. I would like to ask where he's going to put those. And how are the trucks supposed to get to those acceleration and de-acceleration lanes? There is no way that they can drive on that little tiny road and be safe in any way. On February 5th, I spoke with Mr. Kovar, and he said that no deal had been made with the county, and that such a deal would have to have been made with the city of Wolfherth, as they now own the road. There was no plan in place at that meeting of how to fix Alcove. And again, watch the video. After the zoning meeting, and later after my conversation, Mr. Kovar stated in a news interview that there might be federal funding available to help a portion of the cost to build Alcove Road. But this money would not be available until maybe 2027. And he said that the county, Lubbock City, and the city of Wolfherth would have to split the remaining costs. Also, at the zoning meeting, Mr. Franklin said that he was trying to purchase land so that the dump trucks could have secondary access to the trash transfer site via 66th Street, but it had not been done yet. Considering the state of Alcove Road, it would have been wise to develop additional property access options in the planning stage. This situation is kind of crazy. Why has the city moved forward with the A-team, or we just heard $32 million project, when they haven't even figured out or shown how they are going to get the dump trucks to the trash station? What we heard today is very different than what we heard at the zoning committee. And that's upsetting to me. The zoning committee approved the zoning change based on false information. When the city figures out a plan to fix Alcove, the public needs to know what that new plan is, who is going to pay for it, when that funding will be made available, and when the roadwork on Alcove will be completed. We want references, dates, and verifications of all plans. We no longer trust the city. We don't believe the city when they say the project is going to come in under budget. We would like to see where in the budget that's been submitted. It shows the cost of buying land all along Alcove to build acceleration lanes. Where does it show the city has financing to construct these lanes? Where in the budget does it show the cost to purchase land and build a road from 66th Street to the trash site? These are some very expensive additions to what seems to have been the original scope of work. Now, if you'd like to look at the map that shows the playa. We don't believe, well, first, we don't believe that this is not going to stink. We all have dumpsters. We know what they smell like. This is not an airtight facility. This is open at all times for large trucks to go in and out. This is not airtight. We've talked to people that work and live by facilities like this, and they say sometimes the stench is unbearable. We do not believe the city when they say that all of the garbage will be removed from the trash station every night. We have been told that in the city's permit request, there is an allowance to store waste storage at this facility for extended periods of time. We do not believe the city when they say that this will only happen as a consequence of weather delays. We don't believe the city when they say that they will preserve and protect the playa located just northeast of the waste station property. I have spoken with Alberto Jimenez of the Texas Water Development Board, with Jason Coleman of the High Plains Water District, and with Heather Johnson, who works with Texas Parks and Wildlife as part of the Texas Playa Conservation Initiative. Heather Johnson said that although this playa has been damaged by the current 66th Street, it is still contributing water to the aquifer each year. This area needs water, all recharged to the aquifer matters. There are over 1,000 water wells within a five-mile radius of this playa. These, we need to protect playas. Expanding 66th will destroy this playa. And when I told Ms. Johnson that the city said they would take steps to preserve or move this playa, she had very real concerns as to how that could be accomplished. I would like to see exact conservation plans for this playa and have it verified by an independent environmental scientist. And I would also like to see the plan approved and verified by Ms. Johnson. In your handout, I've included pictures of the standing water close to the city's acquired property. This picture was taken three days after a good rain in September of 2023. The water extended much further immediately after the rain. It's not too late to do the right thing. Please move this facility so that it sits adjacent to the new Outer Loop. There are large parcels of land available, especially along the southern portion of the intended freeway. This land is not close to schools or homes. As the population of Lubbock grows largely toward the south, the geographical city center will also move to the south. So it makes sense to select a property by the Outer Loop. Please, at the very least, postpone your decision until a public meeting is held, a meeting of the city of Wolfherth, the city of Lubbock, and the county, a meeting that's open to the public. Please, it is not too late to do the right thing. Please select another location for this trash transfer station. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to 6.6?
I was pastor. My name is Mertesia Gamo-Ferraro, and I live in 1201 Buckingham Avenue in Preston Manor. I do not approve, and I'm in opposition, of Item 6.6 of the zoning from low-density, single-family district to industrial park district. I live three minutes, three minutes away from 7401 Alcove Avenue, the site of the new trash location. 7401 Alcove Avenue is two minutes away from a dog park, from an event center, from a little playa lake that has a walking area, where a bunch of dog owners like to go walk, have a bunch of fisher, people fishing. You have, it's just a great place where you see, close to graduation, people like to take pictures out there, people's birthday celebrations. It's a very beautiful area, not only for us that live around that area, but also for the ducks. Right now, we have so many Canadian geese. You hear them like at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night when they take off. It's beautiful. Every day, I've been taking pictures because there's tons of them, right? It's beautiful. And I love that location just like the rest of us, and that's why we're here. Not only do we have the ducks, but we have the turtles and the frogs and the fish. So we recently moved around that area, and my son has saved probably seven or eight turtles around this area. What we do is we walk around the park, and you always see these turtles in the middle of the street. So he has to go pick them up, and he has to save them, right? Why do the turtles go from one to the other? Well, we have one little playa lake, and they like to go to the smaller one. And so we've like saved big turtles, we've saved small turtles. It's just something fun for us to do, but it also tells you a little bit about the neighborhood around here. This is a neighborhood a few minutes away from this trash location. Also, this is past week. I've seen the runners from Friendship High School. This is where they like to run. And it makes me smile because I used to be a cross-country runner and a track runner at Friendship High School back in the day. This is the time when our coach would put all of us in the back of a truck, and he would drive us to a location, a dirt road or somewhere, and he would drop us off, and we would have to run our way back to the high school. And it was always around like two to five miles away from the school. This area that the trash location is going to be at, that's an area where the runners, you know, run. I've ran that area before. It's too It's too close to neighborhoods. It's too close to the school. My husband used his VA loan to purchase the house that we're in this past year. He served ten years as an Army Infantry Officer. He was deployed three times, one in the initial invasion of Iraq and two times in Afghanistan. He was exposed to burn pits. He lived months out in the desert, in the desert. Food supplies were being dropped off by helicopters. How do I know that? We met before his last deployment, and anytime he had access to a phone, we would talk. And it was always odd hours. And I could always hear the helicopters where they're dropping off supplies, and that's the only time they had access to a phone. Let's just say that I'm still happily married over 11 years. And he, why am I bringing up my husband? Well, I'm bringing him up because he's really good at researching stuff. So last year, when I was finally in the mood, like, okay, let's get a new house, he did his research, he planned. He's the one that in the military was an operational officer, company commander, battalion plans officer, and a platoon leader. He never saw anything about this new zoning area that's going to turn into an industrial area. Do you think someone like him would have picked this place as our forever home? And same thing with our neighbor. He works in, he's a senior historian from Los Alamos National Laboratory, and he assisted with the Oppenheimer movie. He also did not know that the zoning location was going to happen. You know, when we first found out about this a few weeks ago, when we finally got some notification via email address from Preston Manor, that's the first time we ever found out about the zoning location. The people that are pushing this have no idea about this location. This is a location that's populated by families, by schools, by businesses. It's, and not only that, but it doesn't make sense. Like, why, if you're purchasing a new home in that area, would you think that they're going to zone it later on for an industrial site? All the other zoning stuff that you had to date, this stuff makes sense. Like, you're talking about high density to commercial, everything makes sense other than ours. And I think it's funny how 66 is the number that you have on this. The zoning request from low density to an industrial park district, like, how extreme can you get from one to the other? And I understand you're laughing, but you know what? Being in my position, I'm pretty pissed off about this stuff. And so are my neighbors, you know, and that's why we're here. We do not understand where you're trying to push this location. And what you should do is you should find another location. The roads are horrible. They're terrible. These potholes, oh my goodness. Like, there's times you have to take the Alcove Avenue just to avoid all the traffic of all the parents that are dropping off their kids in Bennett Elementary. You have one road, and that road is packed full of people. So you take the back roads, you can get to school on time where I can take my kids or I can go to work. It doesn't make sense for you to try to overpopulate this with other vehicles that are too heavy for this type of roads. So you're going to try to approve this before you even fix the roads? Are you telling me that you don't have any money to fix the roads before you try to put this trash location? I'm an attorney. That's what I do as my practice. I do criminal defense, I do CPS removal proceedings, and I'm about to do juvenile representation. I love helping the people out. But if you put this location in our area, I might change my practice to personal injury because you are going to have a bunch of accidents in this area. It's a guaranteed. And you know what? I'll make more money, and maybe that's what I need to do. Thank you.
You're on deck.
Alrighty. My name is Marshall Drennan. I live at 1515 Churchill Avenue in Preston Manor. Mine's relatively quick, I think. Kind of alluded to some of the frustration with this is kind of the choice of where, you know, when you choose to live in a location and you get to look around to the site and see what's going on, and you can look at zoning. And as an architect by trade, it's something I dive into, you know, the flood plans, all that stuff. And so this is something that I feel like was taken away from me when I made the choice to choose to live where I was living. We saw a lot of examples of other transfer stations. And I didn't, I don't know when they were constructed, but the question I had was, were they constructed before the neighborhoods and the other commercial elements were built around them? And did they get that choice to move in around those transfer stations and potentially even benefit from a cheaper cost of land at that time? And then I'll turn this into this guy over here. But I'm very ignorant on how this works with Lubbock County versus Lubbock Land, but I agree that I think the new Loop 88 is a great location as well as there's, where it crosses the Marsha Sharp is just five minutes further down the Marsha Sharp, but would also give better access to everything around the 130th and Loop 88 South area. And if you, in theory, and I haven't done all the studies, but in theory, if Lubbock continues to expand, I feel like that could even be a better location than this in terms of how it services the time it takes for all the trash trucks to arrive at a transfer station. And there's currently nothing around there. So I'll turn that in to them. That's a really crude map. I apologize, but thank you for your time.
Sir, would you give me your name one more time?
Marshall Drennan.
Drennan?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Marshall.
Hello, Jeffrey Page. I live at 7607 62nd Street, Lubbock, Texas, 79407. I live right down the street from Alco Trails Middle School. I stand against this. I bought my house three years ago, and this is just, never knew this was going to be here or anything like that. The traffic around there is already as bad as it is to add more. Okay? Go through the presentation I've seen so far. I know they come up with all these, oh, look at this one here, look at this one in this city, this one in that city. The previous person said, which came first? They were buying land, doing that. I worked as an air traffic controller. I've seen airports that have been out in the middle of nowhere. Next thing you know, there's a city around it. People complain about the airport, they're like, well, which came first? The airport came first. The other thing is, is when they were talking about, heard people saying about the zoning board. They're talking about putting in a, more stuff in there other than just the transfer station. They want to add, oh, let's add recycling, let's add, oh, let's do more maintenance vehicles, and, oh, we'll put the sand trucks there and we can store other stuff. You're selling it as, we're just going to put it as a transfer station, but you have so much land over there, you're going to keep using and expanding it even more and make even more. Until any of the road infrastructures there or anything like that, there's not even a chance that it can even handle the traffic that is going to happen. And especially Alcove, that road needs to be completely redone. And I don't know why you guys are talking about, oh, we're going to redo Alcove. Well, why don't we just pave it? It's not even paved from 50th to 34th. It's a dirt road. Well, why don't we, that, to me, takes a little bit precedence, you know, than to sit there and do it and trying to repair this. But anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Y'all are welcome to line up if you'd like, so you can get in order.
I have a couple of pictures I would like to share with you guys. Good afternoon. My name is Billy Scott. I live at 7516 West 66th Street. I've been out there for, right at 20 years. I've been there for a while. I've been there when it was Cleechy Dirt Road, gravel road. That picture is me looking out my front door at this facility that you're...
Billy, what's your address again? I'm just going to make sure since we're looking at this map.
7516 County Road 7,000. Basically right across the street looking out on 66th Street. So I've been there right at 20 years. I've been there even through the Forest Annex Station, and we're still there. And 66th Street, our county's Road 7,000, is probably one of the oldest traveled roads in Lubbock County per Mr. McKay when he was on the county when we had meetings back then about trying to get the road chip sealed. So we've been in the city now five or six years. So before that, our road was barely chip sealed. Before that, it was a Cleechy Road. 66th from Upland all the way to Alco right there where it goes into Wolfherd. Alco was the same way. Alco was barely done. Three to four years ago, it was chip sealed. Route four annexation, the county finally had enough money to do that part there. None of those roads were engineered. They're all narrow. They're not safe. You go drive them right now. Why don't you go drive them in the morning at seven o'clock in the rush hour with all the schools? From Upland to 66th, all the way to Alco and all the way out, all the way back to 50th. Go to the new schools, the new subdivisions, just go drive that. Say we even rebuild these roads here. You go build five-lane roads there. The amount of traffic we have now is beyond dangerous. When I look out my front door, my kid goes to school. My youngest is still at home with me. She catches a bus out there in my driveway. It's asinine to watch that traffic every morning and in the afternoons when she's dropped off. I have her text me when she's home off the bus just because I don't know if she got hit or not. You can check the traffic accident counts. Three to five accidents out there, if the city's keeping stats. I know I can tell you three to five a month out there on my road between Upland and Alco. Thankfully, we just got a four-way stop sign there. We've been asking for that since the city annexed us in. We got the center stripe painted twice since we've been annexed in. That's the narrowest road in Lubbock County. So is Alco. But my deal is, even with you fix the roads, those trucks and the amount of truck traffic with everything that's already built and all of the homes that's going to be coming online as they're built out there, that's two vehicles per household. You people proved all this stuff out there. You know how much more is coming? How much more with what we already have that's happened in the last five years so damn fast? We're going to have even more. How are those trucks going to adequately get in and out of that location? You can't. You're strapped. You have railroad tracks, you have the state highway, you have angles, odd angles with those roads with Upland and also Alco. There is no way to logically enter and exit, coming off of 82nd, or 87, sorry, the front edge, over the railroad tracks, down Alco, slow down, speed up, pick up. There's no way. There is going to be a major problem here. And there's going to be more lawsuits. Y'all are going to be sitting here in these meetings, going to executive session to fight or approve to pay. Why can't we put it somewhere else where it's more feasible? Like everybody else here said before me, their statistics were pretty right on. There is other places this could go that's more feasible. It's not like y'all put the transfer station in here, then all of us moved in and developed around it. No, we've all been here. And you bring the transfer station in that we're all here now. You live on the west side of town. You're in our district out there. You know what everybody says?
Sir, am I asked you to address the whole council and not Dr.?
Okay. Well, I'm okay, all of you. But when you look out my front door, what do you see? Look at the road. Look at where my kid catches a bus every day, twice a day. Do you really think you would like your kids out there in front of that and be afraid and wonder if she's going to get ran over by a damn trash truck? It's logic, man. I just wish you guys would think about this situation and look at the bigger picture and maybe look at some more feasibility studies instead of these guys cherry picking which facilities they want to use. I'm in the construction business. I've done construction. I've been around these projects. They look nice and pretty when they're finished. They're only as good as the maintenance that's kept up around them. They will smell. We all smell the feedlot smell when we get the east wind, when it's damp. It's going to be the same way around these facilities. And you can't tell me it's not. If you don't believe me, you go to these facilities and ask the neighborhood people that live around them, that's around them every day. There is no way to get rid of that smell. It happens. Go to your trash can in the alley. What do you smell? When it's wet and damp out there, if they hadn't picked up the trash, what do you smell? That's why we take it out of the house every day. I wish you people would look at the bigger picture and let's have some more meetings. Maybe some other options where this place should go instead of there. I could deal with the smell. I deal with the feedlot smell. But I can't deal with the safety issues with all of our kids. Not only my kid, my neighbors up and down the road, the neighbors up and down Alco, all those apartments. You watch the school bus pattern that drives every morning and every night. Elementary school, junior high, high school. During the day, junior high has field trips. Those school buses are in, out, out of there. The new elementary school is coming online. There's going to be field trips of those kids in and out during the day. It's school bus traffic all day long in that whole area out there. Go try to drive through there from four to six o'clock, trying to get there to get your kid from school on time or take your kid to an event at school on time. And you want to put more trash trucks on there and more bigger traffic? Plus, everything that's coming in the future? I just wish everybody would stop and take a step back. Maybe let's look at more options to address this for the city of Lubbock and their future development, but also for the city, the people, the neighbors who got to deal with it every day. That's what I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Bonnie Brooks. I live at 7450 66th Street, 79407. My family and I have continuously lived on what is now 66th Street since 1966. I can assure you, I have seen everything that has gone on, on that road for all these years. It is a pretty scary place to live right now, but there's a couple of things that I want to bring up that you all have not heard brought up. Number one is the fact of those railroad tracks at Alco and Upland. I can assure you, those of us that live on 66th Street, when those trains go by and they stop the traffic, the traffic backs up about as far down Alco or Upland as you can see, about as far down the Marsha Sharp Freeway as you can see. And it sits there and sits there. There is a lumber yard place that has their own place that the trains stop right there at 66th and Upland and unloads lumber. This is a continual problem. We have got a horrible water runoff situation. Our property sits a bit higher. They came in and they cut wasaw right beside us down really low. That floods totally. It runs straight out 66th Street. That road is flooded. One of the last big rains we had, we had six to 10 vehicles for at least an hour, and I'm talking about different vehicles. People would help them get out, and more would be stuck almost immediately. Six to 10 vehicles on 66th Street. I assure you, no amount of improvement you do on those roads is going to stop the trains from going through there. They're not on any particular schedule. They just stop and back the traffic up. We can't leave our homes. We can't get out on Upland or Alco. My husband has had four heart attacks in the last year, and it is difficult to even get an emergency vehicle down 66th Street at times. This is a dire situation. We have the school traffic, the school buses. Another problem that I don't understand is why none of us that are most impacted, that live close to this thing, knew anything about it. I heard the people at the Planning and Zoning Commission and at this meeting repeatedly say letters were sent out to them on their cases, and they got so many back approving, so many disapproving. I assure you, none of the people on 66th ever were given a letter, ever. You know how we found out? On the news, on the news. Now tell me, are y'all being good neighbors when that's how we find out about things? That's not right. Another big concern we have, and I'm doing my best not to address anything that anyone else has already addressed. The wind always blows out there. I lived on that road all those years when it wasn't paved, when it was a dirt road, when it was a Cleechy road. I am on the north side of that road. What direction does the wind blow? South, southwest, always. That smell as well as the trash. When those trash trucks come in there, I know that you think possibly you're going to control all that trash, but it's not going to happen. When those trash trucks come in there, I know that you think possibly you're gonna control all that trash, but it's not gonna happen. And when that blows in sixty-sixth street, when it blows up behind those businesses right there, and when it blows in my yard, who's gonna clean that up? Who's gonna clean that up? Because neither my husband and I are physically able to clean up the trash that the city of Lubbock dumps out there and lets blow everywhere. I would beseech you on behalf of your neighbors and the citizens out there to find a better place to find, to, there's gotta be more of them, to, to put this trash transfer facility, because I don't want your trash transferred to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Yeah, you get, get there quick.
My name is Lee Mayhew. I live at seven oh three North Twelve Street in Preston Manor. Uh, my first comment is, I would appreciate it if the council does not think in terms of the fact that they've already invested into this property and therefore have to make the decision based on that investment. Uh, the other thing I'd like to say is, is that we hear nothing from the development people about some of the issues that people have raised about smell, traffic, and these other locations that they went to visit. All we saw was where other things are built around it. I would implore that you ask them to go back, talk to people in those areas, and find out if what people are saying here about the smell, the traffic, the accidents, things that are going on, are actually happening there. I'd be willing to bet you that you'll find out that they are quite concerned about some of those issues. Uh, the other thing is, is no one's asked this large group, who here opposes this and wishes you to vote against it? But I'd like to see who here is wanting to see, stand up, please, and see how many people have come here today asking you to vote against this, at least to find another location. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayhew.
Hello, my name is Faith Robinson. I live at sixty-seven eighteen Santa Fe Drive, Lubbock, Texas. So Mr. Howe gave a great speech first tonight, right? He was full of facts and I'm full of questions. So, to the council, I ask you, how do you research and plan an obviously controversial project of this magnitude without us, the residents, that directly affects having any idea that this is going on? We, I found out about this project August twenty, August sixteenth of twenty-three. The land had already been purchased, allocated for a trash facility. I moved to Lubbock six years ago. We chose, you know, our home for a reason and we love it. We love it so much that we don't mind paying these astronomical taxes that are imposed on us each year. They go up by crazy amounts. We love it. But we don't want to live next to a trash facility. I feel like the responsible thing to do would be to build the trash facility away from residential and commercial properties. And then if people want to build there, next to it, because it's so clean and it doesn't cause any problems whatsoever, well, then they're perfectly free to do so. But we, we bought here because we liked the area. We wouldn't have done it had we known a trash facility would be coming. Okay. So, in the zoning meeting, the presenters that are planning this project stated that they sent out eighteen notices and they received one reply. Eighteen, y'all, eighteen. Just not right. So, my next question is, how can you rationalize paying six point three million dollars for property that is valued by Lubbock CAD, Lubbock City Appraisal District, at two hundred forty-one thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars for the year two thousand twenty-three? Now, if I went to the bank and tried to do that, they'd tell me I'd lost my mind. They would laugh me. I don't care how good my credit is, I don't care what an outstanding person I am, it wouldn't happen. And I, another question is, at the zoning, um, meeting that we went to, how can you expect a zoning body, governing body, to make a decision based on the facts that they were presented to at that meeting? There is no research, there's no data other than what they tell you or what we tell you. So just yesterday, I'm watching the news and the newsman says, oh, well, um, about the alleyway. Okay, I'm sure y'all are familiar, because it's kind of hot right now. The alleyways behind the houses, that people are having to pay humongous thousands of dollars because the city has decided, has decided they're not gonna maintain that anymore. So the sewage, if I'm not mistaken, I just saw it glanced on the news, the sewage won't drain from their houses now and they don't have six thousand dollars to fix it. So how can you be expected to make a knowledgeable decision before you investigate the facts that are presented to you, the facts that are presented?
I'm gonna get you back on point, because we have a lot of other people speak, that's, that's a topic for a different day and you're welcome to show back up and make citizen comments.
Okay.
Stay, let's stick to point.
I have, uh, another, one more, one more point. At this, um, at the zoning meeting, they showed this map right here. And it looks great, right? You got seventy acres, you got a little red line and you got one little square there and it says, this is gonna be our trash facility. And, um, the zoning members were like, oh, wow, that is so insulated. I love how insulated that is from the community at large around it. Well, they went on and asked him what they planned to do outside. He said, oh, we're gonna do a small recycling, there'll be some parking out there, and you know, that was pretty much it. Well, guess what? And on the news, August tenth, the Department of Public Works, Mr. Franklin, Wood Franklin, I believe, he said, he was so excited, the project has grown substantially because now the land purchased is no longer just for a transfer station. As expected, the city of Lubbock will use the land for more than a transfer station for solid waste, which is the traffic that we're factoring in right now. And he goes on to say, right now, all of our fleet services, all of our public works, our water, our wastewater, our street departments are all located on the northeast side of town, on over Municipal Hill. While we have the transfer station, we will have what we call an MRF, which will be the recycle center. We're looking at having a fuel facility because obviously we're going to need, oh, don't move it. To fuel those vehicles, those vehicles will need to be serviced. So we're looking at maybe a fleet facility and then public works. We'll probably stage public works fairly quickly on that land so that during winter events, when we have salt and sand staging our equipment, they're not all over on one side of town. So, the, the trucks, the commercial vehicles that we're talking about are not, uh, what, four hundred trips with a garbage truck a day? Now you're talking about the whole city of Lubbock fleet. This is our home and we love it and we, we depend on you. Y'all are our council people, you're our representatives, you're the people that we look to and expect to act in our best interest. We elect you. We, I don't like to feel like I have to watch the, the page to see what's coming up every day because they might try to slip something through. We don't want to do that. So, I'm asking you, please reconsider.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Edwards. I live at seventy-two oh eight sixty-first in Lubbock and built that house in nineteen ninety-one. I'm wondering if I can borrow Mr. Franklin and his Google pictures to show something. And I think it'll show, I don't have any handouts, I think it'll show what I'm trying to show you.
Do you have a specific picture you recall?
Um, either the intersection at sixty-sixth to, um, sixty-two eighty-two on Upland or Alcove. Yeah, you're good. And my concern, the reason I'm as- asking for this, is sixty-sixth to sixty-two eighty-two on Upland i- is a mess. It's a mess now with just cars and minimal commercial traffic. If you put truck traffic, because we went through this when they were building the dirt work for the high school. They all came either down Upland to sixty-two eighty-two, because it was easy access. And that's what you gotta have. You need easy access to get in and out of a site. So, so sixty-sixth to Marsha Sharp is a problem today. And unfortunately, I know that you're gonna fix the road. I know that you told us you're gonna fix the road, you're gonna make it five lanes, it's gonna be able to handle traffic. The thing I don't know that you can fix is the railroad tracks and the state road. Sixty-two eighty-two is a state or a federal road. I don't believe that you can do anything with that and I don't believe you can do anything with the railroad tracks. Maybe wrong. If you can't do that, then you have that mess from sixty-sixth to Upland. And it'll never go away and it won't go away if you don't put this here. We're still gonna have to deal with it. But we won't be dealing with trucks as many. So, if you move to Alcove on seventy-sixth, and I've visited with Mr. Franklin and I've seen the pictures and I understand the need for a transfer station. Lubbock's growing and you can't continually drive that far. I get that part. If you come out of seventy-sixth to Alcove, you own that property so you can fix it. I've heard people say the road's bad. Of course it's bad, it's dirt. You can fix that and you can make it seven or ten lanes, whatever lane, number of lanes you want to make. But I don't think you can fix the left-hand turn off of seventy-sixth to Alcove if you expand that road. If you make it three-lane, which is north and south with the turn lane, or you make two north, two south, even if this, even if the county or the federal government and the city says, look, we created a problem, we're gonna fix it, great. If you come off of seventy-sixth, how are you gonna cross all the traffic that's going to the schools at different times of the day, going north, and how are you gonna cross the traffic that's coming south? So you've got to cross northbound traffic and you've got to cross southbound traffic to even get to the intersection of Alcove and sixty-two eighty-two. There's not enough room to have a semi from the railroad tracks to sixty-two eighty-two. So you have to stop on the north side of the railroad tracks. Then you have to have basically a drag race with the people on sixty-two eighty-two to get to the turnaround under, that you're talking about using to get back on the loop to go to the landfill. And you're gonna do this with a loaded semi. And you're gonna expect the people on sixty-two eighty-two, Marsha Sharp, to say, oh, it's a semi. I let them go. I mean, I drive the traffic. I can be just as guilty as some of those people of not letting somebody in if it's gonna make me wait a little bit longer. My gosh, if I gotta wait a minute, I'm just not gonna be courteous. I don't know how you're gonna be courteous to those trucks and let them speed up loaded, much less empty. I don't think you could do it in a bobtail truck without some danger. But you're gonna do it with a semi. And this, Mr. Franklin told me that this was the route they were gonna take to keep them off sixty-sixth, Upland and Alcove going north. And I'm talking about the tractor trailers. The trash trucks, you can leave on sixty-sixth, but if you go, if you go down sixty-sixth, you're still gonna have to turn south on Upland to go to the area's south part of town. So you're still fighting that intersection with railroad tracks, and I'm too boring. No, I know. It's, it's just, that's what you can't fix. You can fix sixty-sixth, the city can fix that, you can find a way. You can even fix Alcove by yourself and you can fix Upland, you've said you're gonna do that, and I believe that. I just don't believe you can fix what happens at the railroad tracks and Marsha Sharp. Thank you.
Tracy, were you at seventy-two oh eight sixty-eighth?
Seventy-two oh eight sixty-first.
Sixty-first. All right, I'm just trying to keep a tally.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Gremian, resident of twelve fifteen North Fifteenth Street in Woolworth. I appreciate your allowing us to be here today. Um, few things, common sense things, I'll try not to trot over ground that's been discussed already. First and foremost, the ultimate destination of this refuge is way far north, up in Abernathy. The proposed location for this transfer station is way down to the southwest. The statement was made at the zoning meeting that this is near South Plains Mall, which is the population center of the whole area. Well, what sense does it make to go from the population center of the area, South Plains Mall, I'll do it your way, to the southwest, three and a half miles, just to go back to the north in Abernathy? How far is it? Twelve, fifteen, eighteen miles? Makes no sense. The statement that that was the population center of the area, well, common sense tells you, if you, if you look at these boundaries, that's the farthest southwest you can be in Lubbock city limits. You can't be any further southwest and be in Lubbock. Am I not correct? Right? Right? Would it not make more sense, like the first gentleman proposed, to look for another site in the direction of the ultimate destination of the trash? Issue two. The good folks say, well, this is an enclosed facility. I lived in Dallas on the southwest side, two and a half blocks from one of these facilities. We had an office that was, well, like I say, two and a half blocks from it for a period of five years. The odor does vary with the ambient temperature and humidity conditions. On a dry, hot day, no, you don't really smell it that much, that's true. But if there's humidity, if the wind blows in the right direction, you cannot keep this facility enclosed. The trucks start at grade, they go down a trench, and then the top of that truck levels off with a concrete floor. Concrete, as many of you know, is porous. It absorbs things. Have you ever dropped something in your garage that was smelly? Gone back the next day, what do you smell? It's still there. Well, they're gonna be doing this every day, all day long. If you look at the good folks' pictures, you'll see, it doesn't go from one truck straight to another. They drop it on the concrete and then they use a front end loader to push it in over a ledge, drops down into the truck, the big eighteen-wheel trailer. That's how it works. I've seen it, I used that facility there. It's very convenient when you have something to drop off, but there is an odor. Have any of you ever been to a dump facility of any kind that did not have an odor? Any of you, ask yourselves. It's not possible. Concrete is like a sponge. It absorbs moisture, it absorbs smells. That's a minor thing, I know. The big issue is safety. There already are new schools built up there, just north about mile and a half or so. There's a lot of little kids. They don't read the signs, they don't know not to step in front of a truck. Let's picture that, that map right there. We're all driving this, this eighteen-wheeler, the garbage truck. We're going southwest on the Marsha Sharp Frontage Road. Are we gonna turn this way? No, you gotta turn back that way. How are you gonna do that with an eighteen-wheeler? Look at it, right there. Makes no sense. I implore you, find a location that's better suited to your ultimate goal. I implore you, find a location that's better suited to your ultimate goal. Something that works, something that makes sense. Common sense, that's what we're all about. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Leigh Green, sixty-four oh one County Road fourteen seventy. On the map that was here before, my house is on a little tiki, so even though I'm not in the city of Lubbock, I feel that this directly impacts me. One thing that I haven't necessarily heard a ton of, alluded to, but we've talked about choice, we've talked about what comes first. Does the airport come first, or do the houses come first? Well, if the airport comes first, and someone has a choice in where they choose to live. In this situation, I moved, my husband and I, with, like you, used a VA loan to purchase this land, an acre, we have developed it over time, we have a shop, finally he got a shop, right? You know, like, that's the whole thing. We have a pool, we have, we have invested so much of our time and our love into this community. This was supposed to be our forever home. We wanted that to be something that is valuable. So what we're talking about now is property values, and the impact that that's gonna have on my investment and on all of our investments as we go forward. Now people will look at my property that I have poured my love and care and concern and all of that into, and be like, "Ooh, yeah, it's near a transfer station. I want Ms. Haney to get your transfer station, you're so passionate." And it inspires me to be passionate about trash, who knew?
Ms. Green, I, I understand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't supposed to.
Let's not direct anything, it's staff directed council, please.
It's important that we get this, it's important that this transfer station happened. We just want to ensure that people then have a choice, if they want to move next to a transfer station, that they're able to do that, versus us, that it feels like we don't have a choice. There's a thousand people that have signed a petition saying, "Please, please pause, please take some time to reconsider, to find places that are already zoned for industrial, that don't have two brand-new schools, thousands of neighborhoods." If you take the little circle and you go like this versus this, like, whenever you put it right in the middle, it makes it look like nothing's there. But if you move it ever so slightly, there's an Equestrian Center, there's a Playa, there's Yano, there's Preston Manor, there's tons of homes, tons of developments. So I implore you to please consider finding another place for this to go. And most importantly, thinking about, my daughter is here, she's ten, um, Ally, Alpau, say hi. Yeah, okay, you know, she's ten, so, I got what I got. And I want her to show that people can come together as a community and voice their concerns, and that we will be heard and listened to, regardless of the fact if we don't live in, like, I don't live in the city, I get that, but I still am meaningful. I still shop and own property in Lubbock, I still do all of those things. So please, I implore you, help us, listen to us, and please consider a different site for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally, for being here today.
I think Ally is the true MVP of this meeting right here. We appreciate you, Ally. Show this video at school tomorrow. Hi, everybody, my name is Nate Douglas, I am at thirteen oh five Essex Lane. I promised myself I was not gonna get up here and talk today. I wanna thank Wes for getting up here and doing an awesome job. I share all his same sentiments that he had and concerns that we have. And I wanna thank you all for taking the time to hear us out. I know, I can't imagine sitting in your spot every, you know, couple of weeks, coming up here and hearing everybody's concerns, I wanna thank you. You love it, right? Highlight of his day, he, he just told us. So I wanna thank you, and I know sometimes some of us, you know, we're all very passionate, myself included, about this, we're scared. This personally impacts every single day of our lives, of our children's lives, of their futures. We're scared, you know, I've got a four-year-old and a five-year-old that were gonna be here. Ooh, I'd be in trouble if my wife was here, I got the ages wrong. A three-year-old and a five-year-old that were gonna be here today, but they had a Valentine's Day party for some reason that's cooler than being here to support Dad. But it is what it is. We're passionate about it, and I know it seems like we're upset with y'all, but we're not, we're upset with the situation, and we just ask for y'all to keep, keep our thoughts and our concerns in mind as you're looking at this, this vote for rezoning this. Just a couple things, I wanna go back through every page of the PowerPoint, I'm just kidding, I know, everybody just had a heart attack, I'm not gonna do that to you again, and I apologize for making it so long, Wes and I worked very hard on it. But there was just, I mean, I, I'm not gonna go over it all again, but just some things that, that we're concerned about is, you know, there was this, if you, I couldn't tell you what page it on, but it's the first page with the drawing of the map. That's what was shown in the zoning council meeting, the zoning committee meeting. And if you look at the next page, you can see and you compare the two, it feels like there was something hidden from the public. I know it's never the intention of this council to hide anything from anyone, and we know that y'all are just trying to make the best decision for this future of this city, and we appreciate your time and your efforts to do so. But it does feel that way, and that's one of the reasons we're so scared as citizens of this community. If you look, there's a future transfer station expansion that's on there, that to my knowledge has not been talked about. So yeah, this facility may be thirty-six thousand square foot, and please, I know I can't address anybody, but if there's somebody here that's, can tell me I'm wrong, please tell me I'm wrong, I don't want to give false information, but it's saying thirty-six thousand square foot. Is that before the transfer station expands, or is that after? Right? So if it's thirty-six thousand square foot now, I mean, I, I'm not great, but I mean, it's about this big now, and now we're adding about this big to it again, it looks like we're gonna double, and, you know, there we're at, what is that, seventy-two thousand square foot? We've got a future MRF, which I think stands for Maintenance Repair Facility, that's gonna be at the back of it. There's just a lot of stuff that we don't feel was transparent, and we know that's not the council's fault. We're just asking, we're passionate, we're asking for you to take this all into consideration as you're making this decision and you're casting your vote. We're, we're concerned about our kids, y'all. There's, I know, there's not, just tons of studies about this project, right, as far as, you know, transfer stations probably haven't been around thousands of years, I would assume not, right? So there's only so much information that we have, but we're concerned about these roads that we have, the traffic that's gonna be on these roads. The traffic, I'm sure y'all are tired of hearing the words "traffic," I'm tired of saying the words "traffic," right? We're concerned that little Timmy, my Ethan, my little Ellie, are gonna be on their way to school, whether it's walking, whether it's biking, whether it's riding with a bus full of their peers, and they're gonna get in an accident. I drive this area every day, I see accidents way too often. Not only that, but over closer to the school, there's even more accidents, and yes, you may say, "These trucks are not gonna be driving over next to that school off of Donald Preston." But when that is full of trash trucks, the rest of that traffic has to go somewhere. And they're gonna go over there to that Donald Preston area, and it's gonna cause an increase, and it's gonna cause even more accidents. I get so tired of hearing about accidents happening at that intersection of, I think it's Cambridge and Donald Preston, some of them are fatal accidents. These are our kids, these are the future of our community, that's why we're so passionate about this. On this map as well, I do wanna point out, I've worked some with, uh, some developers, I'm sorry for touching this mouse, but I'm just gonna show this really quick, I didn't figure you wanna jump up every time. But right here where this mouse is, to the left, where the little hand is, while it looks empty, that, that's not empty very long, they have already started the roads for that over there. That's gonna be a community of over five hundred homes. Where's Colin at? Colin had to step out. There's a developer here that's developing that area, but it's in the PowerPoint, there's gonna be a lot of homes there, that's not gonna be vacant for much longer. I was driving this area this morning, on the way to this, well, this afternoon, on the way to this meeting, and you can stand at that transfer facility and see, right across the street, that's gonna be a ton of homes with a ton of children out wanting to play and enjoy the outdoors. I get so tired of my son being on his, his tablet all of the time, we push them to go outdoors, now I'm gonna be afraid to do that, 'cause I don't want him to get out there and get hurt in traffic, right? And neither do you. But I'll digress from there, I appreciate your time, and I just wanna reiterate, you know, we're passionate about this, and I apologize if it seems like we're taking it out on y'all, we're just asking, we're, we're begging y'all at this point to help reconsider the location for this. We're not saying a waste transfer station doesn't need to happen, 'cause I agree, logistically, it absolutely makes sense for this to happen. We're just asking them, can we, can they, can y'all compel them? Show you the other locations, I don't know, maybe y'all have seen the other locations they looked at, all I've seen is this one place presented. Can y'all compel them, like, "Hey, show us this other data that y'all looked at." Let's get, once we give this yes and we start rolling forward, there, that train is gone, there's no getting this back, right? And I understand we've purchased the land already, and there's a term that I hear called assumption of risk, right? When they purchased that land, they knew was, it was zoned for low-density residential area. They assumed the risk that it may not get zoned to be industrial property when they purchased it. We can't use that as their excuse, that, "Oh, hey, we already purchased this, so we need to move forward with it." They assumed that risk when they purchased it. So I appreciate all of y'all's time, I'm sure y'all are ready to get home, I sure am ready to get home. And again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Council's gonna take about a twenty-minute break, and then we will continue with the All right, good evening, it is six oh seven, just turning six oh eight, and we are back from recess and a break. We will continue on with anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Agenda Adam six point
Good evening. Dennis Brink, B-R-I-N-K, seven oh oh two fifty-ninth. Lived out there for thirty years. The biggest problem we used to have in the neighborhood were tumbleweeds. Now things have changed dramatically, but just a couple things. The trash trucks, and you can, you can explain it to me, but I know they recess into a cement floor, and they're loaded from the floor to the bottom. Then I would assume they're tarped pretty heavily, and I've been behind a lot of semis lately with tarps on them, and some of them hang on and some of them don't. I've been, been behind a lot of them, they're just, it's like landing gear on an airplane. Some forget to put it down, some don't. There's some that will and some that won't. But the, uh, the fact remains, there's gonna get a tarp loose. Okay, these trucks are gonna leave, head down to Marsha Sharp, they're gonna go by the mall, and any debris that's hung on the sides of them, in the wheels, anything that they pick up as they're going out of there, is gonna still be on that truck, and at about sixty mile an hour, most of that's gonna break loose. Not to mention the fact that the top of the truck creates a vacuum, so that tarp comes up, and it's under pressure constantly. So the tarp is gonna break loose given one point or another, it's just gonna happen. So you're gonna spread trash from basically the mall across the interstate as you go up over the top, down through town, you're gonna head into the Lubbock area, you're gonna go down, slide, come by, slide, ride on by Texas Tech with these trucks, hopefully not spreading too much trash, but they're gonna spend, they're gonna spend some. And that, that considered, right now, you've been lucky, you're using trucks that are compa- are compacters, they're basically relatively clean, they may smell, but they're clean. And they do a, they really do do a pretty good job in our neighborhood, they, if they lose any trash when they dump it, I've seen them get out of the truck, pick it up, and throw it in. But now you're going to a whole different scenario. You're gonna load this truck from the top, you're gonna throw a tarp over it, you're gonna have trash down both sides of it, 'cause it's going down into a tunnel. You're gonna have cardboard miscellaneous other things still staying attached, and you're gonna head down the freeway with it, losing trash all the way to interstate, and then you're gonna go up the Plains Deport now, into Abernathy, spreading trash. I think you have a better scenario as you stand. But if you were to look at it as the mall being the center of the city, it would make more sense to me to take four eleven-thousand-square-foot buildings, put 'em on five-acre tracks, similar to what they do in Dallas and so forth, do a, if you wanna tran- if you wanna transfer station, and I understand the concept, I just don't quite believe in it, I don't think it's as clean as you think it is. So you take four units, and you put 'em, one in each quadrant, you put 'em on five, you put 'em on five-acre lots, seven-acre lots, and run a facility out of each direction, It would make so much more sense. Several of them would be near the interstate by, you know, one downtown possibly, over the nineteenth, another one out to the far south end of town, you'd ha- you'd have 'em spread on that, and I don't think it would cost you anywhere near the money that you're about to spend. So with that, I leave you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Nate's back.
Don't be terrified, I'm not gonna talk long.
All right, listen, don't go back over any other points.
I won't, you have my word. Yes, I have two things, promise to keep it to those, two things, I'll keep it short and sweet, you do not have to deal with me very long. So, two things. One, I meant to bring up to y'all, we did have people go to those transfer stations, I grew up in that area in Dallas, we were their visiting family, we went and saw those transfer stations. It's amazing the difference in cleanliness when you know that you're having somebody come in to view the area, right? So we said, "Hey, Custer Road Station," or wherever they went, "We're gonna come in and tour your facility, 'cause we're looking at something here." What I would do at home, if my parents call me and say, "Hey, we're coming ho- we're coming over to your house," I clean first thing, right? So it makes more sense that they cleaned and prepared that area. When we went, it was not as clean as it was when it was visited by the city of, uh, city of Lubbock representatives, and two, uh, and now I'm gonna blank on it again because I'm not, so anyways, it, it was not as clean as it was when the city representatives went out there. So I just want y'all to keep that in mind when you're looking at it. The other thing would be, there, the second point would be, you know, Dallas, they only have so much land, right? You look at Dallas, you scroll out in Dallas, you look at that area, they have to pack those facility, transfer facilities in these tight areas, near residential areas at times, 'cause they have no other choice. We have a choice here. So, that's all my time that I'll take. Sorry for making, y'all listen to me again.
Thank you, Nate. We're still in opposition to six-six. All right, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of six point six?
Good evening, my name is Natalie Miller, I live at eighteen seventeen East Harvard Street, seven nine four zero three. Thank you to Mayor and Councilpersons, I know you've been here quite a while. I had to turn my phone off because it was dying. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Better?
Go ahead and, go ahead and go back through your name and address.
Yes, absolutely, Natalie Miller, eighteen seventeen East Harvard Street, seven nine four zero Yes, absolutely. Natalie Miller, 1817 East Harvard Street, 79403. And I am speaking in favor of the transfer station. And again, thank you for your patience. Um, you all really have a serious decision to make. All of Lubbock is waiting for the decision. I was here earlier, actually. I, I had to leave to pick up my kiddos from school and to take my son to work. I had the live on while I was in the car and my daughter said, mommy, that sounds so boring. And I say, yes, honey, it may be boring, but this may affect you in the future, so it's important that I listen to it, right? And so, listening to the planning, um, it seems as if they've gone into great care into the planning of the transfer station, even considering making additional changes as they listen to the concerns of the communities. The concerns such as helping to finish some of the roads, other cares such as the fact that it's household waste, that no other trash would go there, that there's gonna be an area to, um, you know, separate the different particles like cardboard and plastic, dust control, odor control, environmental and traffic patterns, heavily regulated, regular visits from, by TCEQ, deodorizer at every door, even planting beautiful evergreen trees to hide the site. Um, I was at another meeting with a young man and we were discussing some of the concerns that we have in our communities. And he lived in South Lubbock, Southwest Lubbock. And one of the concerns, a couple of concerns that he had was, obviously, some of the area behind his home wasn't paved. Um, but, and when it rained, some of the trash that they have back there, they have to wait a distance to get that trash transported out of their alleyway. With the transfer station being there, it gives them a quicker turnaround to be able to remove that trash from the area. The last meeting, it was kind of implied, I didn't hear that today, but it was kind of implied, well, don't put it in our community because it's gonna bring down the property value. Um, it's going to, you know, it's not, it's a safety concern for our children. And it was sort of implied, put it into another area. Well, guess what? Uh, I don't want my property value to decrease either and the safety of my children are just as important. So, you know, I hear the concerns and, and it is something to, to, to think of, right? And I would like to think, you know, there was another comment that wasn't mentioned where a gentleman stated that whoever came up with this idea, perhaps they should go get their money back from the, the college. Many of you are very well-educated. Um, some of you have your own firms, own businesses. So I like to think that you've taken careful consideration when you made that decision, right? To my understanding, the land has already been purchased by the city. Um, you've already gone into great lengths to prepare the transfer station. Um, and I like to think that Lubbock has made, or those in position have made a decision that makes sense for all of Lubbock. According to the rationale of the council, um...
Excuse me just a minute. If you all want to have side comments and concerns out there in the audience, if you would please take this outside. But let's give her the same respect that she gave everyone else that spoke.
Thank you. There was, I've been advocating for, when it comes to zoning since 2019. And so, one of the rationales, you know, when it came to putting an, uh, uh, industrial area, industrial site in our community was, well, is it in the best interest of all of Lubbock, right? Um, and so that question is now, you know, given to you all as it relates to the transfer station. Also, is it in the best interest of all of Lubbock, right? Um, and I would like to think that that answer is yes. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of 6.6?
Good evening, counsel. Joshua Schenckles, 2600 Block of 47th Street. I was here at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. I'm sure my words there already got around, but I will reiterate what I said at that same meeting, which is that I really do feel for all these folks that are against this thing. It's nice to see so many newly-minted environmentalists in our community all of a sudden. And I hope that they keep the same energy and zeal for the other environmental problems our community has because this is the first time we're seeing them all. So that's wonderful. But unfortunately for them, in deed, if not in word, the many arguments that they have about safety and about environmental concerns, they don't know this, they don't know this until now, but those aren't terribly persuasive arguments to make before this body and others that are concerned with this decision process.
Josh, I'm gonna ask you to keep this directly to this point and not go on other issues.
That's correct. I'm on this point, Mr. Mayor.
The standpoint.
Yeah. I'm, I'm completely on the point of why we should zone this, uh, why we should change the zoning of this property and place this facility there. But I would digress, Mr. Mayor. We've heard a lot of meandering tales here that haven't similarly gotten called out from the dais. These folks went through a petition process and, as you and I both know, there is, there is a petition process for the city to address things. And it has not been followed in this case. So if, if folks want a petition to be effectual, I'm sure you would agree that they should bring a petition process by the process as outlined in our city charter. I'd like to tell a story that I think is illustrative of why we need this trash plant here particularly. And that has to do with trash in Singapore. Most of us won't be aware that in Singapore, there are no public trashcans and there are no dumpsters. And every piece of personal trash you generate, you keep with you in your home. And the only way to get rid of that is to meet the trash truck yourself and put it into the trash truck yourself. And it kinda acts like a, an ice cream truck where it plays a little jingle and it comes down the road. And Singapore is a very clean place and it doesn't generate very much trash. And America does not have a setup like that. As you well know, America has determined that once we make some trash for ourselves, we want it to go away from us as fast as it can possibly be conveyed away from us. And that comes with costs. To engineer a system like that, that comes with downside costs. And so here we are discussing how in America and how in a city like Lubbock, we accommodate for and build a system that deals with our personal trash and gets it away from us. And so I just thought that would be important to kinda illustrate how other cultures and communities deal with this sort of issue and why we're stuck in this particular problem that we are in and why this facility is required here. Some things that you and I know and the city staff certainly knows. Let's talk for a moment about a lot of folks in this room that have made an argument about like, I didn't know this was coming to be here. I didn't know that this was about to be moved in next to me and I, and I might have made a different decision had I known that. And what those folks don't know, but you and I know, is that Lubbock has a 100-year-old history of the people being there first and then we drop an objectionable thing on top of them without asking them about it. And so unfortunately for them and unfortunately for that ar, argument, Lub, there, there has been no indication that we should change that plan or that process that Lubbock will just drop a thing that's objectionable on top of you and sorry about you. Pedestrian safety has come up a lot. And folks may or may not be aware, I'm sure you are, that Lubbock has been experiencing an increase in pedestrian deaths across our city from a variety of things. And that is a function of how our roads are built. And there has been very little indication that we should change how roads are built. And so that's just a thing that people are gonna have to deal with until we determine to change course across our whole city. And it's unfortunate that it, in this case, maybe lands on top of them, but it is something that our whole city deals with, is that no part of it is built well for pedestrians. And we have pedestrians that are run over and killed all the time on our roads. You know, um, often in our work previously on this, it's like, well, who was here first? You know, and, and I've heard hundreds of times, oh, uh, why don't you just move away from that problem? Just move. You know, and so in this case, you know, I think this should go here. This is obviously needed. We're planning for the future. And if folks don't like that, well, much like we have told almost everybody else who lives next to something objectionable, we should say, well, just move. That's, that's your problem to deal with. Let's get into what is actually driving this thing needing to be here, which is sprawl. So it's been repeatedly brought up that the population, the geographic center of our population is the South Plains Mall. And that's true today. But as you know, as I know, our city has a policy of suburban sprawl that our developers are committed to endlessly turning cotton fields into more and more and more homes to the south and southwest. And it's a policy that's endorsed by the city because the city has made no effort to try and arrest southwest sprawl. It has made no effort to get rid of some of the driving, uh, reasons behind southwest sprawl. And so it will continue to head southwest. And that means our city services continue to head southwest and our city infrastructure continues to head southwest. And so our waste transfer station should be planned on to head southwest because that is the overall policy and trajectory of our city. And so to maintain city service, of course, city service is something that this council all committed to, then this is an appropriate location for this trash plant because this is the direction that our city is heading and we have no intention of changing that. Or at least I have seen no indication of it. Folks always want their costs to go down. And this waste transfer station allows us to provide the services that are necessary to the city and reduce or at least maintain cost effectiveness. And so everybody that's constantly wanting the city's budget to be less, for us to do more with less, I think should be considerate of the fact that efficiencies and infrastructure like this are necessary because otherwise our city budget is all eaten up by the sprawl to maintain roads, to build new schools, and yes, to build waste plants that are necessary for a growing city. Finally, I would say that a criticism that has come up for you guys several times today is only now becoming aware of this thing. Uh, I didn't become aware of this until just now. I would have liked to have known this earlier. And as you know, and as I know, the city is not required to notify folks about this. That you are not required to go out and engage your constituents, that in fact you expect that they should come to you. And so you have fulfilled your requirement to engage the public and to post notice of this meeting 72 hours in advance. And that's all you're required to do. And so if anybody's upset about that, that's really too bad. You have done your duty. So I urge the council to follow the lead of the very qualified city staff who have done enormous planning for this thing. And as you know, it's more insulated from the offensive nature of, you know, what it is than anybody else has ever had the opportunity to have in our town. And so because it makes sense and it's well researched and it, the, the only, uh, state requirement of oversight from TCEQ will be fulfilled. And as we all know, TCEQ is super great at regulating environmental issues. We ought to approve this trash, waste, uh, transfer station. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Josh. Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 6.6? Alright, we will close the public hearing as to Agenda Item 6.6. Alright, we have Wood available. We have Eric available. Uh, we have Brenda available and other staff. If you have questions or comments or concerns about what was presented or want any of those specific items that were brought forth by those in opposition and those in favor or any of those question answers. This time I'll take a, a motion to approve 6.6. Thank you, Dr. Wilson.
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Alright, we've got all of them available. Does anyone want to kick it off? Ms. Martinez Garcia.
Yes, I'd like to address some street issues because I know that we have had some updates. Can we get one of our staff members to talk about some of those modifications and changes?
Certainly. Wood, can you walk us through specifically Upland and 66 Alco to Upland projects that are funded?
Sure. The Upland project, as, as mentioned earlier, is from 66 to 82nd Street. That is a project that the City of Lubbock's working with the Lubbock Metropolitan Planning Organization to get completed. We have received bids on that project and working on award of that so that that will get started for construction and completion within the next two years. Also, we have 66 Street from Upland to Alco. That was in the City of Lubbock Bond projects. Um, that was passed by the voters. And that is currently scheduled for next fiscal year, start, construct or start engineering, but we're looking to move that forward as quickly as possible. As mentioned earlier, we kinda don't want the construction of those to happen simultaneously for several reasons, but we do want them to happen back-to-back and get that completed ahead of the completion of this transfer station. Alco from 66 to Marshall Sharp Freeway was a county bond, part of the 2019 bond. And, um, engineering has been completed on that and where, where we are with construction, that would be a question for the county.
There was a comment by someone about, you know, whenever the train passes and how it congests all of the traffic. Can you respond a little bit to that? Is that something that we can work with the train company to address?
I don't know that we can work with the train company itself, but the intersection that Upland and Marshall Sharp, i.e. the railroad that you're referring to, I mean, that was constructed with the Marshall Sharp Freeway. There's been improvements there. There are arms that come down. There's a median in there so that you can't drive around the arms when the arms are down so that when the train's coming, you can't bypass the, the arms. That will be a similar setup, a similar requirement, um, on Alco when that gets completed and gets improved.
You can come back in. Mr. McBrayer? Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Mr. McBrayer?
Well, here's what kinda seems obvious to me at least. I don't know if it is to anybody else, but I wanna thank everybody who has spoken here tonight. here tonight. No, I don't need him.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wood. I will need him for many things, but not right at the moment. And I appreciate the fact that everybody recognizes this is something that the city does need. I don't think there's any doubt about it. And I think our staff, Eric, Wood, Brenda, y'all all done a great job of bringing this project to us. Our job here as a council, though, is to listen and to represent our cities, and I'm certainly not deaf to what I've heard tonight, all afternoon. I've heard concerns about lack of information shared with the community. I've heard concerns about the impact that this trash station's gonna have on neighborhood homes, nearby schools, traffic. Our neighborhoods are important to us. There've been times while I've been here that people have wanted zoning changes in neighborhoods that would have brought in inappropriate developments to neighborhoods, but these were done by private developers. This is the city doing this, but I don't think we can take that with any less concern or consideration. Some people say, well, we've already bought the land, so there's nothing we can really do about it. I don't think that's necessarily right. This land has value and could be sold if we found a better location for it. Most important thing is it's never too late to do the right thing. So, I think the right thing for us to do right now, because we've heard a lot of information, we've seen the proposals on this, we've heard a lot of questions raised today, is to take a step back and see if we can't give a more thorough review to the impact that this trash station is gonna have on the surrounding area. I don't think there's a rush to do this today. There may be better locations for us to look at. We're gonna have an all-new council up here in a couple of months, or virtually an all-new council up here in a couple of months. And I think those people who are running for positions here need an opportunity to hear from citizens about this. This is an issue that probably needs more discussion. And people need to be brought up to date about what's happening, and voters need to have an opportunity to vote with this issue in mind. So, Mayor, I would propose at this time that we postpone this question to a date certain, and the date I would propose is our second meeting in June, and that's my motion.
All right, we have a motion, I guess, Chad, a motion to postpone. Do we have a second? All right, motion fails. Ms. Martinez Garcia?
Here. I have a few more questions. I'd like to ask some questions now about the number of vehicles that will be coming into the area because, I mean, that has been a very big concern. But I also want to point out some comments that I heard throughout from several folks, and that was, how many vehicles have been coming in when building the school with the dirt trucks? There's just been so much discussion about the traffic. So, will you share with us, Mr. Franklin, how many vehicles are we actually? Can you give me the facts?
Yeah, so, there's been some numbers going around. So, what we have seen in our study looks at going with this transfer station, we're looking at 276 vehicles entering the site. That's an enter into the site. Of that, 145 of those are residential collection vehicles that are coming in from the residential neighborhoods, bringing the trash to this location. 26 of those are routes going out in the, in the transfer trucks, and then the remaining 100 of those are city employees going in and out. That is in. So, if you look at a daily operation, in and out, that's where we get the 500 number.
Wood, if that were 201 separate residential tracks of homes, because I think I heard the number 201 could have been built on that acreage, do you have any idea on your, based on your experience, how many vehicles that would be coming in and out if you have 200 single-family residents?
I don't have that number off the top of me, but it would be more than 276.
That'd be substantially more, or that'd be substantially or equal or equivalent?
I mean, you just figure about two vehicles per residential property, and in and out for each one of those.
All right. Also, on the same, were there any studies that you're aware of that Friendship ISD did before they built two schools in that area? Did they ever get with the City of Lubbock or discuss these plots or plats or the building of these schools with the city?
I'm not aware.
Our future plans with their future plans?
I'm not aware of transportation studies. In several cases, they have reached out to us, we're in there looking at purchasing land to see if that's an appropriate location, but as far as studies and traffic counts, we were not involved in any of those.
Okay. Do you anticipate, based upon your experience, that in three to four years, or possibly five years, when this is complete, this transfer station is done, if it in fact goes in this location, that these roads will be the same or substantially the same as they are today? Are they going to be different?
They're gonna be much different than today with the projects that we have to improve those roads.
All right. And as far as those projects are concerned, who's responsible for the, those projects being done and completed?
The City of Lubbock's responsible for the Upland Project and the 66th Street Project.
All right. And that was because voters in Lubbock passed a bond of $200 million for that to be done. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. As far as Alco, what project, whose project was responsible for that project?
That was a 2019 bond to Lubbock County.
All right. That's all I'll have at this time. Ms. Martinez Garcia?
Yes. Now, thank you for answering all of those questions. My next question has to do with the topic of flooding. We, I keep hearing, and I saw pictures, various demonstrations, let's talk about the flooding a little bit. Can you give us a little bit more information in regards to how it's being handled and how it would be handled when we have a transfer station in that area, please?
Sure. We, some of the sites we looked at, we can get Brenda to talk about the other sites that we looked at, some of those sites were not feasible because they were in a flood zone. This site, however, none of it is in a flood zone. We talked about that, how there is a flood zone associated and flooding with 66th Street and Upland, and that is being addressed with the improvements on those roadway projects, and part of the project, purchasing the property adjacent to 66 for improving some of those flood, flooding issues. But those are related to the roadway projects, and this site specifically does not have any flooding concerns as far as a flood zone.
I'm sorry to take all the time, but I would like to ask Brenda a few questions, if I may, on, okay, sorry, Dr. Wilson, go ahead and do that.
While we've got Wood there, go ahead and let's yield and let Dr. Wilson ask her questions of Wood.
Yeah, Wood, we recently had a meeting, a public meeting, with a group of neighbors out in this location as well in regards to drainage. You know, one of the concerns I've heard kind of over and over as I've been talking to people out of District 5 and out of Wolfherth is the Playa Lake. A lot of people do have concerns about the Playa Lake, and they like having that in the area, and we utilize those for drainage and water. And I wanted you to clarify a little bit, because I think people have a misconception on where everything lies on this property, on what the plan is with that Playa Lake and how that relates to drainage that's gonna be improved all in that area. Can you talk a little bit about the drainage in that Playa Lake right there?
Sure, I can. I don't have the flood zones on this map. I don't know if they are on our zoning maps, but you can kind of see on here the Playa Lakes that are here. I think we've got those on there.
Pull it from my presentation.
Oh, your presentation. There's, yeah, there's Eric's presentation. So, 66 along here, and of course, it's, if you zoom out, you'll see that the flooding goes from west to east ultimately as it, as it goes. And then this area right here that we've purchased property for so that we can over excavate this lake right here so that we can capture some of that flooding, especially in smaller rain events, to retain that water so that it doesn't continue across over into Upland and continue into the neighborhood. However, all of that is in a flood zone, and ultimately, that's where it ultimately goes. But we, with the street projects, will have drainage improvements, drainage channels. The road will be elevated so it goes over the flooding zone situations. We don't have roadway flooding. That kind of answer your question?
Yeah, so, just for clarification, we plan on maintaining the Playa Lake and actually excavating it deeper to help with drainage, so that will still be there. It doesn't affect anything with the triangular piece of property.
We cannot remove any Playa Lake or any flood zone. We can reshape them, but we have to maintain the volume that's already there.
All right. Any questions of Wood while we still have him here? Oh, I'm just trying to scroll down, and my screen's not working, Wood. I'm sorry. All right, Ms. Martinez Garcia, you had some questions of, or Ms. Joy?
Um, I have a few questions later, but I've got some comments first. I think we've been very fortunate in Lubbock. We have trash pickup two days a week, barring some holiday or some, you know, accident. And I'm pretty spoiled, quite frankly, because it's a very good, a good asset, and we pay for it. We help pay for it. I have heard that the roads are bad. They've been bad for a long time. And I've really wondered, when the county, before we annexed some of this property, and those were county roads, what did people do about it? I suspect if they did anything, nothing happened. And so, when we annex property, we inherit that road, whatever the condition is, and we have inherited some really bad, bad county roads. The schools that were built, were built out there knowing full well what the condition of the roads were. The good thing is that the City of Lubbock had done its bond and has plans to fix those. If I understand correctly, Mr. Franklin, this facility will not be complete until 2027?
Correct.
To 2027.
Right.
And so, do you anticipate that the roads that we are supposed to come back, that we are supposed to, that are bonded, that we are working on, will they be completed by 2027 or before?
The goal is to have those completed before. As with anything else, things can happen in construction. When this is completed, should the roads still be under construction? We still have the landfill. We still have operations that we're doing today. But our goal and our planning of all these roadway projects and this transfer station is to have the roads completed prior to the opening of this project.
Okay. You do have a civil engineering degree, right?
Yes, ma'am, from Texas Tech University.
All right. You've already got congestion out in that area that's basically generated by homes and by the schools. You've got it. It's there, regardless of what we do. We've got congestion out there. I heard lots of "I think, I think." We need to understand the process. First of all, Josh Schankels, the South Plains Mall is not the population center. It is the geographic center of Lubbock. And I will tell you that in my years here in Lubbock, which are substantial, houses that were built that I lived in, we built, had bigger lots with houses, but the newer areas that are being developed, the developers like to have more houses on the same block, and so, we have more houses. So, when you guys were doing these studies about how, how many trucks and how many routes, that sort of thing, what did you take into consideration in saying, this is what is going to happen? Not what I think, but this is what's going to happen. What did y'all do?
Yep, so, you mentioned, you know, the center of the population, it's the center of what we call the waste centroid, kind of the center of all of our routes and center of all of our tonnage that we collect as far as production of the solid waste. I'd like to defer to Brenda on some of that so she can talk about the study and some of the sites that we looked at and the criteria of each of those sites and what led to this, if that's okay.
Okay. Ms. Haney?
We'd also like to wish her a happy birthday today. Is she spinning her birthday here?
Yeah, happy birthday, Brenda.
Spinning, spinning her birthday talking about trash.
And tomorrow's Valentine. I mean, just.
Yeah.
It's only fitting that I spend my birthday talking trash.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay. You all did the study, and people have asked, well, what did they do? Well, let's tell them. What did you do?
So, I've been here for just over four years, and in that time, we have done two separate studies, and we looked at a total of nine different sites. The idea behind identifying a site that's suitable for a transfer station is you want it in close proximity to, as Mr. Franklin said, the waste centroid. Where is the waste being generated? Because that way, we are in the central part of where our routes are and where the waste is generated, and we can funnel all of those vehicles into that location, and then we can use long-haul vehicles then to make the long run. It doesn't make sense to move this further south and further away from where the waste is because that just exasperates our travel time. Any of the sites that we looked at that were in those southern parts of town didn't pan out from a payoff standpoint. So, we did look at a site at Quaker and Loop 88, which I've heard said repeatedly, and that site did not pay out in the payout period, and we did look at Reese, which also did not pay for itself in the payout period. It's our responsibility when we're gonna use taxpayer dollars to this extent to make sure that we retire that debt before the project, before the bond funds are expired, so that we can start returning money back to the community, and that was a critical factor that we looked at. We evaluated a number of environmental factors. We studied traffic, obviously, as part of this. We looked at flood zones. We kicked out two or three sites because they had flood zones. We looked at hazard mitigation concerns, and there were a number of sites that had hazard mitigations that we would have, we would have to undertake to clean the land before we could actually utilize it for a transfer station. Utilities and access to roadways is always very critical when you're looking at one of these facilities as well, so.
Someone shared with me earlier that there, and I went out, I've driven it, I've walked it, looked at it, and there are homes that are built, and there's a storage facility across the street from, I guess that would be, it's on Alco.
76th Street across.
Yeah.
South of us on 76th Street.
And some of those homes, I was worried about because they're right across the street, okay? And I've been told now that someone has bought those homes, they plan to demolish them and do, and build something else. So, I don't get this, my property values are gonna be affected. I can't imagine anybody buying, first of all, buying the homes, but then turning around and investing more money in those. So, I don't agree with that, that, that argument. I live out in North Lubbock, and what I understand is going to happen, because I live far enough out, and let's, let's say, North Point, for example, all of those lots were developed with the exception of the last phase of it, because those routes are out by Erskine, North Slide, and North Frankfurt. You want those, those, that trash doesn't go to the transfer station, does it, Ms. Haney?
When, when we designed this, the intent was, and we don't have all of those routes nailed down at this point, and we're not going to until we really understand the full effectiveness of the efficiencies that we're gonna gain by the transfer station and not having to make the direct haul to the, to the landfill. The worst-case scenario is that every truck we have right now, the 50 collection vehicles that we run today, all would shut into this facility and that we would have transfer tractor-trailers adequate to then haul that waste out. So, that's what we've sized it for, is to accommodate that because that's the worst-case scenario.
Is there a possibility that some of the routes, say, where I am in far north Lubbock or in north and east Lubbock that are close to the interstate, that those will just go direct?
There is absolutely the possibility that they will direct haul.
I don't, I, I want people to understand because we've had the "I thinks" and we've had some derogatory remarks made, but how much time staff has devoted to this facility? When did it start, Brenda? Was it before?
I started in September of 2019, and we've been working on this project since I got here. It was a very, I've spent 30-plus years in the solid waste business, and, and there were studies done before I arrived. were studies done before I arrived, so I'm not taking credit for the, recognizing the need for a transfer station. But one of the very first observations I made was the, it is, it is just not the most effective and efficient way to manage our trash by running all of these trucks on a direct haul to the landfill. We need a transfer station.
It's my understanding that the first recommendation that we needed it was in 2003, is that right?
Our first study that we've done, that the city prepared and performed was in 2003. That again, prior predates Brenda and also predates solid waste when it's in my department. However, I was with the city of Lubbock at that time, but the first, the first study we have done is 2003. The city's been looking at it that long and it's, every report that we've done shows a need for a transfer station, the efficiency and the fuel savings and everything that goes along with it pays for itself if done correctly.
How strict is the TCEQ on facilities like this, Ms. Haney?
Well, that's why I'm white-headed, is because I've spent 30 years dealing with the TCEQ. No, I don't want to be flipped. There are very strict expectations that we have for our operation. They will control our operating hours, they will control the waste that we are allowed in, they will control where our stormwater is run, where they will look at our traffic inflow and outflow of the site. We have to identify all of these routes as part of that permitting. They can come and inspect us anytime they want and they don't generally call and say, "We're on our way." They show up and they do surprise inspections all the time because they want to see what's really happening. So we will be permitted, we will be, you know, the, the amount of waste that we can push through the gates will be controlled and regulated by them, so every facet of what we're doing will be regulated.
One gentleman indicated that our 18-wheelers, our big trailers.
Yes ma'am.
Would have tarps.
Yes ma'am.
On the top.
Yes, and I don't like the fabric tarps for all the obvious reasons that he identified. There are, there are trucks now that have, when you look at the bed of the truck, there is a lightweight aluminum, just like the trailer of the truck, lid that sits on top of that one, it's closed. It flips down on the side and lays flat on the side of the truck while you're loading that truck and then it flips back over. And that's the type of lids that I want to use on this for all the obvious reasons because they don't allow stuff to escape. And, you know, tarps, the fabric tarps will tear, they will get, you know, torn up by the wind driving on, you know, highway speeds and such and so, and you do, you are dependent on somebody making sure that they pull it all the way up and, and that's just not what we want to have at this facility.
Well, the vision of trash just flying everywhere as those trucks go down the marsh of Sharp do not make me happy or anybody else, so we want to be sure that, that that does not happen.
Yes ma'am.
Right?
Right. And we, I mean, this is a city facility. We'll be, you know, monitoring these vehicles as they enter and exit this, you know, we'll have a site supervisor dedicated to these types of things. So we'll make certain that they're not leaving the property. Now, I have to pull out from the tunnel before they can flip that tarp over, but that's as far as they're going to go, is just that tunnel immediately underneath the building when they're being loaded, then they'll flip their tarp over and then they'll exit. And we have both, we've built into our design both inbound and outbound truck washes so that can we make sure that anything that's coming into the site and exiting the site is clean.
It's my understanding there's been some discussion of perhaps planting some Afghan pine, something like that around the perimeter?
Mm-hmm.
And also there's a suggestion that there will actually be a fence around the transfer station itself.
We will absolutely put a fence around our permit boundary. The permit boundary is that red line that you see on the, on the screen. That will absolutely be behind a fence and we will be complying with, at the very least, the UDC standards for our landscaping, which is 15%. And our, our goal would be to plant something that is going to grow as quick as possible and will sustain the weather conditions that we have and then we'll provide nice visual screening.
And this property joins, I guess, industrial, the buildings that are immediately?
To the north.
Believe, light industrial.
Light industrial, immediately north of us.
And do they sometimes have 18-wheel, wheeler trucks coming into those as well?
I have seen, yeah, we've seen them in, in the parking lots at those facilities immediately north of us.
All right. You answered my questions. Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Martinez Garcia?
I have more questions, only because, you know, there was so much information and unfortunately, I heard a lot of misinformation from some of the folks, so that's why I want to address these questions so that everybody that's tuning in can understand and get the facts. So thank you for taking the time to do that. I know it's your birthday and we're going to get you out of here, but, you know, one of the topics was the scent and the wind and the trash flying all over the place. Will you address that for us, please?
Sure. I mean, no, no science is perfect, but I want to remind everybody that this is an enclosed facility. So we will have vehicles entering from one side, then through roll-up doors or slide-open doors, whichever one we go with. We don't have that level of detail. They will go in, they will back up inside the building, they will unload. That waste is then pushed into the tractor trailers that are sitting below the ground in that loading tunnel. They're below, they're below that floor level. Those vehicles will then pull out and tarp over. There's, there should be very little, if any, escapage of waste. I think where you're, where you might see some, it's not going to be from the vehicles, the residential collection vehicles unloading on that tipping floor. If it's going to be anywhere, it's going to be if it misses in the chute going into the transfer tractor trailer. We already have built in, somebody that's, in fact, we saw it when we were visiting the site, when I visited the site, there was a person that, that's their job is to clean up that debris that's on that site. And we'll make certain that, and that's another thing that's regulated by, by the TCEQ, that I can't have windmill litter leaving my property, that we have to address that. We do that now at our facility, so we have to go and collect those materials. So, you know, I don't anticipate, we just randomly pulled these sites up on Google. There's not an abundance of trash that you see on the roadways to them. Again, our collection vehicles are enclosed and packed. They don't open until they get inside that vehicle and then that, the vehicle that is being loaded into is immediately covered, covered and closed before it leaves the site.
You know, the scent is still one of the topics, but, you know, when I collect, or my husband collects.
Uh-huh.
When my husband collects the trash, he brings it all together, he puts it at the door and it probably takes him 30 minutes to get it.
Yeah.
It's going to take about 30 minutes to move that trash, is that correct?
Sure. And, and I, that's the perfect example because this facility is kind of analogous to, you know, me going and grabbing the trash bag out of my kitchen trash can, pulling it out, setting it on my kitchen floor, tying the bag up, gathering up anything else I need to put in it, and then I get it carried out to the dumpster behind my house. That's kind of the whole pattern that we're looking at. We're immediately loading this off of that tipping floor where our residential trucks are unloading and putting it right into those trailers. And those are a solid aluminum trailer, so they're not going to have holes or anything escaping from there. It, they're, they're, I can't, it is trash. It is residential trash exclusively. I'm not going to say it's not going to stink, but it's not going to stay. So you may have some of that experience when you initially unload a truck where you get that, that odor, but once it's in that pack, it's being packed in to the transfer tractor trailer and then covered, so that's going to eliminate that odor condition. And again, we are not holding waste. The intent is to not hold waste overnight at this facility. I can't say it'll never happen. I'll say that it's not, it's not in our intention, that, that's the goal of this facility is to be able to get our trucks in and get that waste out as quickly as possible and so that we're not having those issues where we're holding waste in vehicles.
I think this is my last question, or you know what, it's not really a question, it's more of a comment. Somebody said, "We're planning for the future." And we absolutely are planning for the future and also, this is addressing the ongoing residential growth that we're seeing citywide. It's happening all over the place and anybody that believes that the growth isn't happening, it's happening and we keep seeing that. And, you know, I just want to thank you guys because you, I feel like you have been very aware of operational efficiency and I know there was a comment that someone said, "First, you have the transfer station and it is a transfer station. It is not a trash transfer station. It is a transfer station." And what we're trying to do is to address this and it's not going to impact the, you know, the value of a home or anything like that, but I want to thank you for really taking the time and this is going to benefit the entire city. And I know trash isn't sexy, but it's necessary. So I want to, like I said, thank you for taking the time and taking all of the punches in this and with that, I'm done.
Dr. Wilson?
No questions for Brenda. I'd just like to make a comment. So first off, I'm the representative for District Five where this location is going to be and I want to take the time to thank you guys all for coming out to Nott. I have been in close communication with many of you and even more. I want to thank you from, whether it's District Five or the county or Wolfherth for coming and letting us hear your concerns. One thing that I am not is a true politician and I am one of you guys and I have run with the thought of running with integrity and running to do what's best for our city and planning for the future of Lubbock, let me tell you, is not an easy job and it comes with very, very difficult decisions that we have to make every single day. And so nobody up here knows better than all seven of us that sometimes, not sometimes, that's the wrong word, every vote that we make makes some people unhappy and some people very happy. And so those are things that we weigh constantly and I don't, I don't know if you've ever heard, but we make almost zero money doing this. I make zero dollars doing this. This was all for the good of my community because I wanted to do good for the city that I was born and raised in. But that comes with, with challenges and it comes with hurting people's feelings, it comes with making tough decisions, it comes with, you know, standing up here and trying to do the right thing, even though I know it's going to hurt some people and/or based on whether it's facts or misinformation. But I very much appreciate you guys being here. That's part of the process. We will continue to listen to you guys. No matter what the vote is tonight, we want to work with everybody to make sure all facilities in the entire city are built to the, to the standard that Lubbock is willing to uphold for all of its citizens, to make sure all of our facilities are built to make our city continue to grow and thrive but look very, very nice. One thing I don't believe in voting on and/or is changing my vote with elections coming up and/or to sit here and say, "I'm going to do this so I can get reelected again." That has no bearing on what I think is right for the city. We sit up here to do what's right for everybody and like I said, I just want you guys to know, no matter how that vote goes tonight, that's a very, very hard thing to do, but I also want you guys to know that we are listening, we do hear your concerns. I live in this area too, but I also see things from the city standpoint, how much time staff has put into this, how much research goes into planning for a city and that's very difficult. So I just wanted you guys to know that.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Mr. McPrayer?
So one thing I've learned sitting up here from Ms. Joy is to always look at zoning issues as zoning issues. This is a zoning issue as it comes to us tonight. This is our new zoning district establishment of rules and we're sitting up here as how it's zoned at the moment and we're moving all the way down here. Someone commented on that. That's a, one of the largest zoning jumps you can make. So I think we always have to be considerate of how the zoning changes we make affect neighborhoods and this neighborhood has spoken tonight and it's very clear how they feel. And I think they've been very good and very reasonable. They may not have all their information right, but they understand where they live and they understand and they know what's important to them and I think we need to consider that and think about that and admit if we may have made a mistake. I'm not saying we did, but I'm not prepared tonight to go forward on this the way it is.
Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to say thank you to everybody here. I know it's a tough night. We're all in this together and we're all here, here to, here, here to hear everybody out and hear all sides of the issue. At the end of the day, this is a zone case. As a reminder, the councils approved the transfer station, the land purchase, all of that prior to this meeting. We're, we're past that at this point. I think what's important is that we hear what I've heard tonight and what I've heard prior, the people that have contacted me is, I could, I could probably, well, I'll put it in three buckets. Traffic, safety, and cleanliness. Okay? You can put smell and cleanliness, whatever. But I, I think those are the, if, if I were to compartmentalize everything, I think that's what I hear and I think council hears that and I think staff hears that and at the end of the day, the spirit of this project is to do this right and to make sure that all of those issues are addressed. Traffic, safety, all those things are paramount and of highest priority as we do this. I want to thank the staff. I think they've done a tremendous amount of good work on this and this project spans multiple councils. I mean, this is not, this, you know, this council's project, it's a community project. We know it is, it's a, it, the, the cost to the solid waste fund, all these things as we grow, it's necessary. Lastly, I just want to thank Dr. Wilson. So she, when she got elected, she inherited this, okay? And she did her homework on it and she and I have had a couple of, we had a, a long town hall one night on this and had spirited discussion, but she's been tip of the spear on this and she's done a great job and I appreciate her leadership and her support of the transfer station as we move forward. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Ms. Patterson Harris?
Mayor, I wasn't going to say anything, but I decided that I would. The first thing I want to do is correct Dr. Wilson. I get paid. I get a total of 14 cents an hour. And, 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 and that's before taxes. So I say that in jest, but I also want folks to know that the time, the energy and effort that we put into this is far above the pay. It's not something that we think about or anything, it's, we want to make the best decisions that we can with the information that we have for the folks who call this place home. And I believe, and I'm telling you, I have two months and some change left, but I, I truly believe that the staff we have at this city put everything that they have in, in making the decisions that they do. I believe that when we need to make a decision, let's put our, our, our stuff on and let's make the decision because time is moving on and we can't continue to kick cans down the road. Because as stated, this was, became an issue back in 2003 and it never was acted upon. It's an issue back in 20, what was that, 17, that was, actually came to us and we can't continue to push it down and make it somebody else's issue. And so I'm glad we're here. Sometimes it's tough stuff, we just have to go at it. So I appreciate the staff for the work that they've done, not only on this, but on everything and I don't think they take it lightly when they make the decisions. I'm ready to vote, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. I have just a couple of comments and I apologize, I would normally let you have the closing argument. Because you're much better at it than I.
I'll be made.
I get $75 a month. So a couple of things I do want to point out because I knew, know the news and other people report on these things, I do take exception that we're not being good neighbors. This council bent over backwards for the community of Wolfherth and basically saved the municipality of Wolfherth by providing water at the cost of the citizens of Lubbock. We did that because we wanted to be good neighbors and it cost us infrastructure that our taxpayers have been paying for, for years to benefit our neighbor. And so to sit there and say that we're not being good neighbors after what this council specifically done to be a good neighbor, I do take exception to. We have done everything we can to be a good neighbor to the school districts. We have done everything we can to promote them and protect them and do what our police department does to help those school districts by being a good neighbor at the expense of Lubbock taxpayers. So I want to say this council has uniquely, I think, in the last few years, extended the olive branch to these communities. And this is one of those things that I heard, "Well, you're just putting this..." in here and just plopping it right amongst these homes that have already been here. Well, that's kind of what happens with progress. I can't help it that Lubbock was intended to be a sprawled-out community. People wanted space, so they moved. They wanted space and they moved again. And then we caught up with you, and we grew, and we grew. And we can't keep doing that and continue to sprawl and grow with these open, wide-open spaces without creating infrastructure that takes care of the sprawl. You know, to Josh's point, in other words, we're going to figure out another solution. But that's not why we're here today. We're here on this particular location because this is what staff has determined is the best for the citizens of Lubbock, Texas. And this benefits the entirety of the city of Lubbock. The biggest complaint I get is trash. It didn't get picked up twice this week. It didn't get picked up. Somebody didn't get to it. And this helps remedy that problem. And so I think that those arguments, while I understand if I lived there, I would say, "I don't want that near me," but we've gone to great lengths. We went, I mean, I went to California. I don't want to go to California. But I went to see the largest trash transfer station in the world, probably. And I stood amongst it with my wife, and I said, "You know what? It's moving trash. It's not that bad." I couldn't really smell very much that was there. And this is not even the state-of-the-art. So I think, we've done our homework, I believe. In fact, you know, one council member that, we voted on this all the way through. This is not unique. I was talking about this when I ran for office in 2022. I've been talking this and giving this presentation to this community for nearly two years at this location. For someone to say, "We didn't know about it until two weeks ago," we can lead a horse to water, but we can't make them drink. We can't always get the information out there if nobody's paying attention to the information. But I've done everything I could to talk about this, from speeches to talking to clubs, Kiwanis Clubs, Rotary Clubs, Association of Realtors, everywhere I've been, I've been talking about this, in this location. And so we have been spreading this information. So I do take exception that we're just dropping bombs without people knowing about it, because that's not what's happened. I think that this is good for the citizens of Lubbock, and I will stand by that commitment, as this council unanimously has stood by this commitment up until today. We've passed, we've purchased the land, we've agreed on it. It's been done over and over again throughout the last year that we've gone through this process. And in fact, just several, 18, 20 weeks ago, we have council members online going, "This is a great thing," promoting this, approving of this. And so I understand. I'm grateful that I live in the United States of America where people can stand up and give their opinions. But at the end of the day, policymakers and people in our positions have to make decisions, and they're not always, they're not always fun. And so I support this. I think this is good for our community coming forward, and I will be voting yes.
Ms. Martinez, have you called the, Ms. Martinez Garcia calls the question? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.6, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to one. We are now moving back to the consent agenda. We have one poll. That is 5.28. We still have business to take up, so I would ask everyone to kindly keep your communication down. 5.28, I'm going to go ahead and ask Bill if you would come forward for your presentation on 5.28.
Good evening, guys.
Hello, Bill.
I'm going to go ahead and tell you upfront, while I try to play IT guy, which I am not, that my presentation's going to be very similar to what you've heard already tonight. We've had folks on both sides speak about what they think is the best route to take for our city. I hear both sides. We're not in this to try to hurt anybody. We're here to try to make this better for the city of Lubbock, just like the mayor and you guys just said in your previous statements. I can go through my presentation. The presentation focuses on collaboration. We've been doing this, we've, I've been at the city since 1998. We probably started personally with those conversations in 2000, because I didn't have anything to do with it at that point. It was a conversation piece long before I started at the city of Lubbock. This came about again in 2020, when we had COVID. We had extra dollars to do some things to make things better in this community. One of the things that came about was the continuum of care. Yes, we had talked about the continuum of care for many years. We did not have the capacity as one small community development department to pull this off. What you're looking at now is a lead agency that has a dedicated CEO, a board that is wanting to make things better in the city of Lubbock, pushing this to go forward. And I'll say it again, this is about collaboration. There's, I'm not going to argue with anything that was said against this. That's not my role as a city employee. Everything that we do when we come up here to address you guys is with our hearts the best thing for the city. And I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Howerton. I think a few council members may have some questions. Council, do you, would you like to specifically pull this one out of the consent agenda, or do you feel comfortable answering, having Mr. Howerton answer questions and then putting it back into the consent? Fair point. All right. Ms. Patterson Harris, before we get to vote on 5.28, do you have questions of Mr. Howerton?
What I really wanted to, okay, there we go. What I really wanted to be clear of is that we've been at this spot, what, almost a couple of years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
And we've been making our way through the process, which included coming to council to give, ask for support and asking the state if you could apply to become a continuum of care for Lubbock.
You'll remember the first resolution of support that the city council did was in May of 2022. Lots has happened since then. Echo West Texas has come on board. We've got Ms. Longoria running that show for us, for the community. So yes, a lot of things have happened, and it takes time to go through these processes.
And so we're here to, this evening, I was going to say this afternoon, we're here this evening for you to, and the question is being asked again, for support for that application to move forward.
That's all we're doing this evening, is asking for support to continue this process, which will culminate in an application to HUD, I'm guessing in June of this year, to become our own local continuum of care.
Thank you. That's, that's, that's all I needed to know. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. Mr. McPrayer?
So Bill, could you please describe the Echo group? Who makes it up? How many agencies or groups are part of it?
We've got 35-plus. I can't go through and name them for you. You heard from two of the board members that are on the Echo board, that are from providers here in the community. You've got folks that serve on this. You saw David Alderson was here earlier. We've got Ms. Joy, who is the city council. We've got Judge Parrish, who is the county representative. Chief Neil Barron is from LPD. We've got someone from UMC, some from Covenant, a gentleman from Atmos. So this is a great cross-sector board that is taking a look at this and trying to figure out how to fix this for Lubbock.
So one of the things I think I understood from the presentations today was the continuum of care is primarily designed to address homelessness. Is that its purpose?
That's, that's its purpose, to collaborate, to bring services together, to cover the entire gambit of the homeless issue.
And so the, kind of the back and forth I heard today was maybe a little bit of a debate between broader collaboration and then the point made by people on the other side that they could bring in more money to the process. So can you kind of address how you see that? Because I heard quite a bit about that. But how are you assured, or what assurances can you get that you will be able to address that issue of money that you need to get?
Well, the things that you heard earlier, when some of these COCs aren't getting the dollars that they think they need or think they should get, there's no collaboration there. You've got, again, UMC, Covenant, the Health Department, city and county, community development, Echo, 35 other agencies working on this towards one goal.
Ms. Martinez Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill, I think, you know, that we heard from folks that are so committed to the community, and I appreciate all that.
Yes, ma'am.
But I, I do believe that, I mean, I personally work with homeless youth, and it is a growing problem and sometimes not always addressed. And I've never had a platform where we can bring that issue, where we've had an opportunity to discuss with other groups on how we can prevent. And then, you know, now I actually had some folks that I've started talking with.
Yes, ma'am.
It is a growing problem. And I think all of us are offering and doing separate things, but we do need this collaboration. I think it is a positive thing for our city. And I understand the concerns of dollars, but I believe that this will build on that and give us an opportunity. So I do want to thank you for this effort. I thank you in listing all the folks. One of the persons that brought it to me was Jerry Ramirez from who was at his church, and I think he is...
I hope he's not back there, because I forgot him.
But, you know, because they, you know, these folks have been identifying other groups and other issues with the homeless. So I just want to say thank you on that. And that's all I have.
Ms. Joy?
I think it needs to be said that when Echo presents to, for our continuum of care, we're bringing together the needs of all of those agencies that have not had that opportunity. That's what's important about it. It's not just one agency getting funding. It's going to be multiple agencies, whether it's, you know, teens who are, you know, aging out of foster care, anybody. They'll all come together and make that a package deal. And that's what Echo is going to do, and that's why it's so important that we have all these agencies and that we have collaboration so that we can get that done. Been doing this since 2008 on homelessness. It's time that we do this.
All right. Any other questions of Bill? All right. We pulled 5.28 from the consent agenda. We will be taking a vote of six on this. Dr. Wilson has recused for some reasons. So all in favor, I don't have a motion. I'm sorry. Let me get, you remind me, Courtney? Is there a motion on 5.28? Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia, Mr. Massengill. All in favor of approval of 5.28, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries six to zero. All right. Now, we'll bring Dr. Wilson back. We now will bring back in 5.1, yeah, 5.1 through 5.29, exclusive of 5.28. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris, second by Ms. Martinez Garcia. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, 5.1 through 5.29, exclusive of 5.28, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries seven zero. It is 7:30, and with that, city council is adjourned.